I'm going to call to order the June 27th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led for the very last time by our city manager, Martin Tuttle.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding two matters of exposure to litigation and to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the Police Management Association. In all cases, no action was taken. So with that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, state law prohibits us from taking action or having an extended conversation about issues that are raised under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards at the wall and turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item we're currently on. The clerk accepts the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's completed and council questions or public testimony has begun, then we don't take any additional speaking requests. So if you're here on a specific item, please be sure to get the card in prior to the end of the staff report. Also, for some folks, speaking in public is anxiety-causing, and so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations. And we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak on item 1A. Let me first note that both councilmember Sandin and councilmember Orozco are out of the city on business this evening and are not able to be at the meeting. And as a result, it's our intention for item 21, which requires the consideration and approval of a minimum of four members of the city council, that as we get to the conclusion of this meeting, that we will be -- let me turn to the city attorney to make sure I get the precise specification correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, because, excuse me, because item 21 would require four affirmative votes to approve, and we obviously don't have four councilmembers present tonight. When we finish item 20, the meeting will be adjourned to 6:00 PM on July 9th, at which time item 21 will be taken up. That will constitute an adjourned regular meeting, and so it will be appropriate to take action at that time if the council so desires.
All right. And we'll be taking the staff report and the public testimony and everything on July 9th, so it's not necessary to appear two times. Okay, so with that, we have a couple of requests to speak on item 1A, and the first is by Bill Denton.
Good evening, Mayor. And a short city council, I see. Sorry to see that, because I wanted to talk to all of you at the same time. And the reason I want to talk to you is a decision that you made on reclamation District 900. I'm not here representing them, although I have been on that board for over 50 years. So I, as an individual and a citizen of West Sacramento for a long time, you can -- the city council can rescind their vote, the same as the city council in Los Angeles did with the governor's pipeline, Delta Pipeline System. They rescinded that until they get all of the facts together, the good and the bad. I think that the city council has primarily only received one side of the picture. I don't know how many of the city council members have been to a flood control meeting. I don't know how many of them has been to a reclamation district meeting, but they should go to those and see how the things are handled. We're talking about the security of over 50,000 people in West Sacramento. If you come to RD 900, we'll treat you so many different ways, you're going to like one of them, I'm sure. But you can go up, we'll take you up on the levees and go the whole route with you, explain everything to you, so that you have an idea of what is involved in maintaining a levee system. But the main thing is that the -- it's a critical decision, and it will be probably the most critical decision that the city council will make in a long, long time. Again, it can only stress the fact that it is a safety issue and covers all of West Sacramento, and probably around 50,000 people. With that, thank you very much.
Mr. Denton, thank you. Larry Langford.
Good evening. A quick question. Do we still have the white bicycle, rental bicycles, in the city here?
So if you want to provide all the testimony, we'll -- at the close of all the public testimony, we'll go ahead and do that.
I mean, just a simple yes or no answer is all I was wondering, because we always called them the ghost bicycles, because they're white, and they've disappeared. There's not a single one. I just drove around the city again today, not a single one anywhere in the city, and I was just curious if they were replaced with the jump bicycles or what happened to the white bicycles. So that's one of the questions I would like to have answered if I possibly could. Also, the only other thing I had to say was, kind of in a sarcastic manner, was I think you guys could go ahead and vote on item 21, because I think everybody here knows that everyone's going to vote for it anyway. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Danny Langford.
Good evening. Last Sunday, Mr. Mayor, you put on your Facebook page about the setback levees, and I quote, "are a national model for urban flood protection that meets the tough standards put in place after Hurricane Katrina." I find it interesting that when some of us came to you after Katrina and asked for you, not hysterically, to take heed of what happened, that it was underneath the levees, the erosion that caused the topple over in New Orleans. Yet, I personally was belittled by you, Mr. Mayor, some of your friends, saying I was like Chicken Little, which probably was supposed to be Henny Penny, saying the levees are falling, the levees are falling, which is not true. And for every before every meeting, you read about public comments about not making people feel uncomfortable being up here. A lot of people don't speak out at these meetings, because they are tired of retaliation and being belittled, and I frankly am one of them. I'm glad that you finally are concerned and taking heed of what happened in Katrina. But at the same time, I just am bothered by the fact that, being it's an election year, now you're ramping up all this stuff on your Facebook page and out in the media and stuff. And also, we had several safety meetings at that time, and frankly, and I wasn't the only one at the meeting, so I know I wasn't the only one that heard this, we were told, "Your best bet is to get on the freeway, because the overpass is high enough, and you're just on your own." So I certainly hope that we've changed that model of safety meetings, and that we really have something that's going to effectively help us get off of our island out in Southport, as well as the rest of the community, if we had a catastrophic event. And being that RD 900's having this hostile takeover, it's very concerning to many of us that it will be properly managed by the city when your focus is so much on parks, bikes, and art. We need to shore up our levees. We need to protect our levees. We need to protect the people of this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes all the comments under item 1A. Just want to address the bicycle question.
Be happy to. So Social Bicycles was the white bikes. That company's been taken over by Jump, so the electric-assisted bikes you see now have replaced those white bikes that you called the ghost bikes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. All right. That brings us into item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Riverfront Joint Powers Authority and the Policy Steering Committee for the Streetcar met on June 19th. The significant items were we discussed the JPA budget, and because of the delay in receiving the federal, or at least notification of the federal share of the project, it looks like we're going to be about $2.6 million more in costs. This is strictly because of the uncertainty created by the federal government in approving the grant that I think was already approved, but it still needs to be actually paid over. So the -- each of the jurisdictions is going to look at, we approved the budget for the additional $2.6 million, but I think there's an action in Sacramento that has to happen in terms of providing the fund to make sure that the project stays on track. And the other item was, we had a station workshop. We essentially discussed the different design ideas for the stations. At least the committee voted on a design which was kind of a more of a modern concept. I understand that the -- there's also going to be workshops in the cities as well for public input on that. And so those are the most significant items.
Great. Thank you. I recall maybe Mr. Avio could -- I believe that what the JPA authorized was the release of the $2.6 million between the two cities that was already budgeted and allocated, but this was the authorization to release the fund to actually be spent. The cost hasn't gone up, it's just we're proceeding with vehicle purchases and the construction, so maybe you can help.
Yep. The $2.6 million you're referring to is to release the funds that are previously committed by the city, just to help with the cash flow purposes?
Right.
So it's not additional money, it's previously committed money?
Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. I had a couple, because I was not at the last meeting, but I attended the New Deal Leaders Big Ideas Summit in Seattle beginning of last month, and made a presentation on what we're doing on the West Sacramento home run and some of the workforce efforts that we're making here in the city. It's featured as one of the national models in that space. Remember, we won the Big Ideas Challenge last year for New Deal, and then also joined a group there on implementation of the Opportunity Zones provisions that are part of the tax code that we're -- I know Mr. Laurel's been active on, but a lot of -- still a lot of outstanding questions around exactly how that's going to proceed. The federal government's not really playing a very clear role at the moment about how to define a lot of the elements of that, and so the role that cities and investor funds and others are going to play, or everyone's trying to figure out how this is all going to proceed. So that's been a central focus of that group. On behalf of the Army Corps of Engineers and HUD and the Federal Transportation, Department of Transportation and EPA, was asked to come to San Francisco to present on change management and how those agencies can improve their -- the way that they -- their own operations and their ability to be strategic and to work better and better with cities, because those agencies in particular see West Sacramento, whether it's in the Brownfield space for EPA, or for the HUD space on homelessness and affordable housing, or for the COR on the flood protection work. The city has an excellent reputation in terms of, you know, how well we're managed and how we're able to respond to opportunities and integrate different programs and priorities. And it's a real testament to our staff team in particular. I want to, you know, really acknowledge the city manager and the executive team and all the staff in the city, that no other cities were invited to come, but really was to give a class on how to run a 21st century public sector organization. And following up on that, the COR, the district office here at the USC Army Corps of Engineers, sent their Leadership Academy to City Hall here in West Sacramento for essentially similar purposes. How does a 21st century public organization like the COR adapt and take advantage of and create new opportunities? And they said that of all of their local partners, West Sacramento is one of the strongest models in that regard. So it's a good, solid photo confidence for our team, and helps to also strengthen the relationships from agencies that we need a lot of help from, and regulatory relief and cooperation and grants as well. We had a meeting of the Bike Share Policy Steering Committee two weeks ago as well, and I think the council, like everyone else in the world, is aware of how successful the launch of the jump bikes has been. The -- from the moment of the launch, for the first three weeks from that launch, the number of rides per day on the jump bikes in the three cities, in Davis, West Sacramento, and Sacramento, was three times the number of rides per day as in San Francisco when they launched the system. And we were -- the original expectation was we would be successful, so we were able to achieve one-half of the number that San Francisco achieved, because San Francisco was supposedly a bike, you know, a bike mecca, and our community and region were not there yet. But we essentially beat that by six times. So it's pretty extraordinary. And one of the biggest complaints has been that nobody can find a bike when they want it, but that's entirely a result of the extreme popularity of the system, that nearly all bikes are in use at any one moment, and they're being ridden so many times that the electric charge doesn't, you know, runs that electric charge by the evening. So we have more bikes coming when we get to the full 900 by the end of the summer, but really a remarkable, a remarkable launch. And the other thing I think we've seen from the initial data reports is that they're getting usage in our city all over the service area. So this is not something that's just serving the Bridge District or the Washington neighborhood, but we're seeing a lot of the bikes for trips in and to Bright, the Westfield neighborhood, Meadowdale neighborhood as far in, of course, Bike Dog, and the Brewery District. But there almost always is a bike or two or three at Bright Park, as an example. And so the social equity objectives that we had and the geographic equity objectives that we had, we're learning at least that there is, that there's demand for bike share throughout the entire city. It's not just a tourist thing. It's not even mainly a tourist thing, and that it's getting really good, really good usage. So we'll be getting additional reports back. There have, of course, there have been some, a glitch here and a glitch there, and the Uber folks have been, they finalized the integration with the Uber Payments app, so we should be opening that up soon as well, so that folks can reserve their jump bikes on the Uber app in a seamless way. I attended the annual meeting of the US Conference of Mayors in Boston. That's where I was at the last council meeting, and led sessions on workforce development and opportunity zones. Also, a session with the, some of the family members and law enforcement agencies surrounding the Parkland shooting. This was a major theme of the work of the conference, but as the chair of the Education Committee, it's my responsibility to bring together a bunch of the young people who've been outspoken in the country around that issue, and looking at common sense, national, state, and local gun policies. We had a meeting of the West Coast mayors at that conference specifically for the purpose to collaborate around cannabis regulatory policies, as we're, nearly all now of the West Coast cities are in states that have legalized recreational cannabis usage. And a lot of the issues that we've been dealing with in terms of licensure and some of the federal issues and others have become, you know, much more pronounced. So we've formed a small coalition of cities that are working together to try to address some of those issues, and then judge the civic technology competition at the Conference of Mayors as well. I also attended the Yale Mayor's College. Yale, each year, convenes two dozen mayors across the country to help get us better at our jobs, and so bring together some of the key public administration and management professionals around how to execute change management and deal with some of the emerging public policy issues. It was a useful session, although it probably won't go every year. And then lastly, last week, I, with a delegation of 17 other mayors, visited the Tornillo, Texas Detention Center, at which a large number of the young people that have been separated by their parent, from their parents at the border, the parents who are here from Central America principally, seeking asylum, and a group of mayors last Monday decided to go to the border to investigate and also to shine a light on the conditions and what was happening there. We assembled a delegation bipartisan, but from many, many Republican mayors and Democratic mayors as well, principally from states other than California, Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Florida, South Carolina, in order to demonstrate, in the clearest terms possible, that partisan politics aside, that this was an issue in, on Main Street America, in cities just like ours, and in cities, like regular cities all across the country. It motivated largely to go, because so many local residents, as I know council is aware, were outraged, anxious, and wanting to do something about what was happening. So we took that message there. It did have an impact, an impact both in terms of policy and certainly in terms of some of the shining a light on what was occurring and what still needed to happen, even after the executive order work. It was an emotional experience, but definitely one that was important to be a part of. So, and of course, there's always, there's always some folks on all sides of the issue, but just as a reminder, the city had nothing, there was no city payment for it. I paid for my own ticket and own hotel, and no staff accompanied me as well. So that's it. In terms of the reports, we don't have appointments this evening, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 13. Are there items on consent for separate question or comment, or?
I'd like to bring items.
Thanks. Okay, and I have questions on 6 and 10. All right, so let's go first to, we have a request for a public comment on a few. So the first is item 4, which is consideration of signal equipment purchase to implement the Harbor Boulevard Advanced Traffic Management System pilot project. Mayor Potemla Desmond.
Thank you. Who's on this point on this one? Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this one up, and thank you. So this item, A, I'm glad we're finding a kind of solution to help this intersection, because this one seems to be the one I get most emails or comments about how we can make this better, and a $16 million solution just seems too far off to accomplish. So the question I had is, a lot of the feedback I've received on this intersection has to do with striping as well, coming south on Harbor, turning left east on Industrial. Is there any consideration around and crossing Del Monte as well? Has been any consideration of striping changes? Has that been looked at from an engineering, traffic engineering perspective, as being helpful to alleviate the congestion? Because what happens is, as everybody's coming home, that's an alternative corridor to come through. Is there any consideration on that? Is it something staff could look into?
Yeah, one of the areas we're going to look at, actually, we have met with the fire department, and as you know, there is a clear zone right in going southbound.
Correct.
We are actually going to end up removing that clear zone to help provide room for stacking of the traffic through that area, and then work with the timing associated with that, so that as vehicles need to move the, leave the fire department or from the fire station, we will put that whole area on essentially lockdown, so that they can move out of the area.
Sure.
Easily.
Yeah. And I guess the part I'll ask you, I'm no traffic engineer at all, but in coming to that area, I just ask you to look at maybe the, when you get to Del Monte, there's a left turn striping there, and then you have to bypass that to get to the two left turn lanes from Del Monte to Industrial. And that, to me, seems to be where a lot of the problems occur. So again, I'm just asking, maybe you could follow up with me offline in a memo, but I just wanted to make sure that we've taken every opportunity to look at. This system will help, because the lighting there
Yeah, definitely.
can help.
Yeah, we definitely will be taking a look at the striping.
And we can't wait for a $16 million improvement, so whatever we can do to alleviate that area, because it has become a more prominent area to get back into the city or leave the city. So anyway.
Yeah. We definitely will be taking a look at that, too, along with the traffic signal improvements in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks. Item 7 is consideration of approval of Resolution 18-39, requesting authorization to execute and submit fiscal year 2018-19 Transportation Development Act claim to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. We had one request for a public comment on that. That's why Pat Flint.
Excuse me, which item was that?
Six.
Item 6. My concern with this, and it may not be a concern of anybody else, but, Mr. Mayor, aren't you the president sitting on the board for CACOG? And if so, I can't remember whether you are or aren't, if so, is it a conflict of interest for you to vote for funds that come back to our city? It's just a general question, because I don't know how other entities are when it comes to giving money to the city. And I'm not sorry the money's coming here, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
All right. That's only public comment. So just on that, on that question, no, it's not a conflict. We are, members of the council are members of a wide variety of other government agency boards, joint powers authorities, other agencies to which the city is a member, or to which the city has been assigned by state law, and whether that's the Air Quality District or the Transportation District or CACOG, and we, it is, it's not a conflict to take actions with those with respect to the city. No, I'm not the president of CACOG. No, I'm not the president of CACOG. I was the chair a long, long time ago, and Mr. Tuttle is the executive director. I'm just the regular chair of the Transportation Committee today. But yeah, no, it's not a conflict for the, for city council members in their other jobs to be allocating money back to the city, in their jobs that are assigned by the council. So I had, Sarah, on this one, it's, I don't, I don't think it's actually a question, but just, this is, so this is for the upcoming year, and it has, I think what we had anticipated, which is we'd be spending slightly more on the programs than were, than come in from the TDA allocations, largely due to the via service, which we're going to have later in the evening, but that we have, we have sufficient, we have been, we have been building up reserves in this account essentially over the last several years, starting, while we were preparing to launch our, a set of transit or transit-related alternatives. And so that, we could actually continue to do this, even with this slight deficit, we could do this for another eighteen years or something like that, given the, given the reserves that we have in the TDA account. So we're not, I just, I want to make sure I understand that right. We can continue to deliver the via service at this funding level at least, in the foreseeable future, without running the risk of running out of cash.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, I believe the answer is yes. In terms of reserves, you're referring to the STA funds?
I'm referring to the...
That we haven't, that we haven't been using?
The balance, right? We have, even at the end of this, we'd have a five million dollar balance?
Yeah, and the other thing to note in terms of the via service is that the contract that we have right now goes beyond the actual cost of operations, because it included the final performance evaluation, some other items, so the true cost of this year is closer to four hundred eighty-five, five hundred thousand dollars even.
Okay, great, all right. Yeah, resident parkers, and one of the, we'll talk about the actual services later, but one of the questions has been, but, you know, after the pilot, how would you possibly pay for this? And we have, thanks to Sarah and finance and the city management office and the council, we have, we have, we have a plan for, we are able to afford a successful services delivering the mobility that the residents need, so. Appreciate it, thanks, Sarah. Okay, item seven is consideration of approval of amendment to the Safe Routes to School Professional Services Contract with WAC Sacramento. We just had a request for a public comment by Pat Flynn.
Yeah, I was, my only question is, the schools that are left to be evaluated weren't named in the transmittal that I saw, and so I was just curious as to which schools have not received the service from WAC Sacramento.
All right, I don't see Mr. Doherty. Sarah, do you have the answers to that?
Yes, the three schools that remain to have additional evaluation done, it's Riverbank, Elkhorn, and Westfield, and the reason for that is because there were some changes at the district level in terms of staffing that prevented us from being able to make adequate outreach with some of the principals and staff at those schools. We did do some preliminary outreach with Elkhorn and Riverbank, but have been unable to, or, sorry, Riverbank and Westfield, but we've been unable to make contact with staff or the principal at the remaining school, but we'll be picking up in fall and getting going with that.
Okay. I don't, is item ten also, okay, that's Jason. Okay, so item ten is consideration of information regarding the submission of grant funding applications for the Active Transportation Program and CACOG Regional Funding Program. So these are, these are two programs that do come before the Transportation Committee, which I do chair at CACOG. But the, so the question I had is the, well, one, just process-wise, so this is the selection of a set of projects, or selection of individual projects in each of these funding sources from a pool of eligible projects that are in our CIP?
Right, these come from the, well, they come from the CIP, and they were vetted for eligibility with available grant funding, so that's why they're being brought forward to you, just to see if there's any questions that you have about us moving forward with any of these.
Are these the only, are these the only, so from our, from our CIP, are these the only projects that are eligible, or are these, in your judgment, the most competitive ones?
I couldn't answer that, but I could come back to you with that and have that information for you. There are a wide variety of projects that were in our Bike Ped Master Plan that could be potentially eligible. I would have to match them with the CIP to see what was actually programmed in versus what is eligible.
All right. Yeah, the reason I raised, I mean, that question, like, of which projects to apply for, it's a big deal. I mean, and it's a big policy call, really, for, and there are moments where the competitiveness might be affected a little bit, but the difference in terms of the value to the community of the project is big, and that's rare, but it does happen, and so the council should have the ability, I think, to be able to make some judgments about that, when the timing allows for it. And I think in this round, it would allow for that, but also for the commission that oversee, you know, that is, is helping to guard this as well, that there, it seems like this is a set of policy choices about which of the projects to submit, and we would most likely say, yeah, these are the right ones, but it's hard to know, because we don't know what are the ones, you know, what was the one, what was the second one that you thought of after Sycmoor, for example, that would have made it, and same thing all the way down the line. So I'm cool with these, these are great, these are all great projects, and we should be submitting the most competitive ones, but I think in the future, it would be, it would be ideal if the council and the commission were able to see, you know, the process by which you got there, at least, so we can see, okay, if it, is it really that much more competitive? Because we really wanted to do the Linden, across, you know, the Linden sidewalks, for example, instead of this one or that one, just be able to say, yeah.
We did update the Bike Ped Master Plan recently, and we've kind of changed the criteria to have a low, medium, high priority instead of first, second, and third. Gives us a little bit more flexibility to try to figure out what are going to be the most competitive and most eligible projects, but we, if there is anything that the council does have in mind that they would like to see potentially be brought forward instead, I'd be happy to take that back, and we could discuss it internally with staff and then come back to council.
No, I would, I don't, well, others may have a different view. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, in the, in the future, at least give us the decision trail, right? So that we're able to see how, how you got to your recommendation, so if there's, if there's another policy relevant or a policy that we would like to emphasize versus another one is the community, we're able to, we're able to do that, as opposed to only have this, like, take it or leave it.
Right, right.
So, for this time, so, but I'm not suggesting starting over and going back through a whole process. I think these are all good projects.
Right, all right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And item, did you only have one?
Yeah, I already did it.
Okay. Then item thirteen is the minutes of May twenty-third and June thirteenth. We had, just one request for a public comment by Pat Flynn.
Thank you. Because the RT nine hundred was such a controversial vote, and because you took a break, and it's not in the middle, but towards the end of the item, you came out to vote. The next time you do this, and I call it coercion, because I feel like a couple of members were coerced into, number one, moving and seconding this vote. To this day, it's still in question. I'm assuming you reviewed it. I still have a problem with that, because it isn't, wasn't very well heard, and the mayor is usually very good about saying who moved it and who seconded, but at this meeting, that was not done. So there's still a question in my mind as to who moved it and who seconded it. At this point, it's really not relevant, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, so that from now on, you make it very clear who moves and who seconds to the public. Thank you.
All right, then, with that, we have the consent agenda before us, items two through thirteen. Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion on it?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item fourteen, which is a public hearing and report of Measure K and Measure V revenue and disbursements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nishish Sharma with the City Finance Division. Today, we are requesting the City Council to conduct a public hearing on annual Measure K, V report, receive the revenue and disbursements report, and direct staff to publish this report. This is the fifteenth year of Measure K and report presentation. In your packet, we have two reports, one is a scorecard, and one is a full detail of Measure K and V revenues and disbursements. In Measure K scorecard, the funds are allocated to the programs according to the council Resolution zero fifty-eight, zero two fifty-eight, adopted in two thousand and three February, pursuant to the guidance approved by the advisory Measure J. This scorecard demonstrates that staff adheres to council's direction. The scorecard is attached, is broken into two sections, base allocation and capital allocation. Base allocation is the quota cent of the house sent override, and funds are allocated as part of the budget process. The base allocation, the cumulative annual range is between twenty-seven million and thirty-seven point five million. However, actual appropriations to date has been forty point nine million. Some categories in Measure K's spending plan are spending more than the allocation. For example, water rate subsidy, police and fire services, and some categories are spending less. It's important to note that Measure K water subsidy is slowly phasing out as we implement the water meter program. The second part of the Measure K report is the quota cent allocation to the capital portion that commenced in two thousand and three and ended in two thousand and thirteen. The voters approved Measure U that allowed the continuation of the quota cents for the next twenty years, and the eligible, and the Measure V provided guidance that the proceeds be used for streetcar, light rail, and flood improvements. The expenditures in Measure V include preliminary staff cost associated with the streetcar project. We have a couple of project commitments for the streetcar, and we actually, from this fund, a contribution of four point five million was made towards the Southport Levy Improvement Project. The second part of your report, as I mentioned, is the Measure K and V detail analysis on how funds were allocated and spent. Also, I would like to add that on November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, the voters approved additional quota cent tax measure, Measure E, to fund city services and others new initiatives. Annual Measure V report was presented to the City Council on May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. We are planning to publish this report in the local newspaper, on our city website, and have a copy available at the city library and with the city clerk. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and respectfully ask to open the public hearing.
All right, are there any questions, Mr. Sharma, before we open the public hearing? I hope you'll also deliver one of these reports to our former colleague, Mr. Kristoff, who is a voracious reader of Measure J, K, U, and V reports, as one of the principal authors of both measures, so. All right, thanks, Mr. Sharma. All right, with that, then, we'll open the public hearing on item fourteen. We don't have any specific requests to speak on this item, but because this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this one? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and return it back to the council for any further questions or discussion. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Nishish, for this, the presentation. The, on the scorecard, when I'm looking through this, the original base amount, it looks like it was two point, two point five million.
Yes.
So the percentages that we have on the column would be the allocations we thought would be appropriate fifteen years ago.
Exactly.
And so we look over to the far left, we see the actual percentages. So based on this, we see, for example, police and fire, we originally estimated would be about fourteen percent of the expenditure. Turns out, it was more, closer to twenty-six percent that we ended up spending. And it looks like the biggest takeaway was from roads at that point, which was, I think we originally allocated twenty-seven percent and ended up spending eleven percent. So I guess my comment is just, well, one is that folks, when they look at this, they could see essentially how these types of funds, which are general funds, are utilized, that if there's an increase in one, there's a decrease in other, and it's, at least from what we're doing up here, is a constant balance of trying to utilize the funds that we have in the most judicious way. But, you know, there are going to be, some of the areas will be short-changed if we increase funding in other areas, and it's just the nature of how this works. And the other is that this is the fifteenth year presenting these types of reports, and I think this is really huge for the public to see, because, you know, one of the things we did when we, when that measure was promoted, was really to take a risk that, you know, the folks that voted for this would, would really, you know, they would have to trust City Council to be able to spend it, as we said, we would spend it. And so year after year after year, that's exactly what has happened, and particularly when we're looking at potentially another tax measure. You know, I think it's really important for folks to see this and see the accounting and the transparency that the City Council has had and the city's had in spending these funds.
Mayor Potemle Desma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nishish, thank you again, as Councilmember Johansson said, these are important reports to get to, again, the accountability and transparency of what we're trying to do and how we spend this dollars are super important. I think the part that we've learned, too, a little bit from Measure E, and is how you present them as they come forward, because I think by the time it gets here, it's already like, okay, we spent that, and we may quibble. I don't remember us really doing that, but, you know, again, as we go forward, applying the standards, what were required for K and V are important to kind of state, this is where it's coming from, where it's going for. So I appreciate this. I really don't have any questions on the actual scorecard itself, and as Councilmember Johansson said, it's interesting to see how things have progressed over the period of time, but I just want to appreciate, thank you, I appreciate the report.
Yeah, I really want to underscore what Mr. Johansson said as well, the, just in terms of the breadth of what this is. Mr. Kristoff and I co-wrote this Measure J and K at the very beginning, motivated by the need to make investments in services and improvements in the community that could not be funded with development impact fees. It was clear at the time that, okay, we were, we were on the, we were beginning to see development occur in Southport at this time, and with those fees, we could invest in parks and sidewalks and bike lanes and, you know, and other amenities in the Southport development areas. And part of the central purpose of Measure J and K was to be able to make investments in other parts of the cities as well that didn't have access to development impact fees. And that is what has happened, right? So the library, and I know everyone in council was around before the current library, but the, the, both the, in terms of the quality of the current, of the library that was, was created because of Measure J and K, and the level and the hours of service are extraordinary in the, in the library world in the community. Neighborhoods that don't have any way to pay for sidewalk improvements, they have gotten them. Street sweeping is a simple thing, but at the time, we were only able to do street sweeping once a month in most parts of the city, and Measure J and K allowed, has allowed us to do twice as, twice as much. And virtually no roads were getting repaired or rehabilitated in any significant way back then, and these funds allowed for a massive road rehabilitation program throughout the city. Now, the revenues have changed with population and with, with sales tax revenues, and that will affect some of the allocations of the revenues, because for some programs, we committed dollar figures.
Yeah.
You know, we had a, when we did the road rehabilitation program, as an example, based on our pavement index, you know, we identified, here's the projects, and while those projects were underway, you know, more growth happened and more revenue came in, and IKEA opened and what have you, so we got more revenue into the fund, but we'd spent that specific amount on roads. So it wasn't so much that roads were short-changed, we spent what we committed in terms of delivering the projects on roads and library and some of these other elements over time, and a larger proportion of the incremental increase in the revenues because of growth in taxes in the tax base has been assigned to public safety. But public, but I just want to be clear, public safety, police and fire have not been, we haven't been shifting money from other purposes to support police and fire. We've just dedicated the vast majority of the new money to police and fire that's emerged out of, out of these measures, and appropriately so. So all of that, I think, is clear, you know, if you read this report and every single report since two thousand and two, but this is, this is full transparency in how we do business, and Mr. Johansson is exactly right, that we take, we take these reports very seriously, just as we know members of the community do, and ensuring that we, that we keep faith with the promises we made. Now, we also need to, you know, in the coming year, have a conversation about the long-term of the J and K, in particular, the revenues and the water rate reduction piece, and so our ability to recalibrate some of the roads and some of the other purposes in Measure J and K will also be a live topic over the, over the coming months as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so this, this require motion to direct staff to publish the report?
I'll move the item. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries, it brings us to item 15, which is a public hearing and First Reading of Ordinance 18-11 approving the First Amendment to the River Wellness Development Agreement. Mr. Tilly.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the City Council. This item for you tonight is proposing the First Amendment to the River Wellness Development Agreement. This development agreement was, which was approved back in April 2016, was the first cannabis-related development agreement that the city entertained, and of course, we have entertained several since then. This was prior to Proposition 64, which did pass after that, and then numerous state legislation has also passed after Proposition 64, which has brought us into the current regulatory environment that we are with cannabis, which is, you know, evolved tremendously, even just in the last, you know, two, little over two years since the development agreement was first approved. River Wellness approached us asking for some clarification regarding the revenue contribution section of the development agreement. It's our understanding that they are either have or will be establishing a second facility in Southern California to help serve that market, and they were concerned that, at least the way the language was written originally, it could result in perhaps a double take on, on product that flows through their system. When we prepared that development agreement, we certainly weren't thinking about a second facility for anyone. It was very early on, and we were, we were learning as we went at that time. So, in, in response to River Wellness Inquiry, we did review the language in the development agreement that was proposed, and we provided in your staff report tonight, the original development agreement that was done, and then the proposed amendments. We did identify that there were some areas that needed some updating, as it primarily housekeeping in nature. We've updated the definition of gross receipts, we've added a new definition for transfer pricing, we've also clarified when those revenue payments are due and by what means they would be remitted to the city, and we've also increased the liability insurance requirement from $1 million to $5 million. No changes in the project location or operations are proposed tonight. These are primarily, again, as we stated in our, in our view, housekeeping improvements to the existing development agreement. These have been vetted with River Wellness and the City Attorney's Office and Administrative Services, and also, the Planning Commission heard this item back on June 7, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of those amendments to the City Council. So, if council is indeed supportive of these changes tonight, staff does anticipate making similar amendments to the other development agreements that we have approved after this one was the first one. So, with that, I'd be happy, I'll close my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions? So, David, in the, in the amendments, and I think the staff report might have been written before, prior to one last set of amendments, because the, I think what staff report's referring to is Section 1.14 and 1.146, is 1.15 and 1.156.
Yeah, that maybe, you may be correct, this was definitely a last-minute one to get through.
Yeah, so, okay, so, I just want to be sure that the, you know, given our experience with HD Supply, which I know that this is, this is in some sense the flip side of that question, that, the way I was reading, 1.15.6 is that whatever gets shipped from or through here, whether or not it's to a final purchaser, would count towards the gross receipts?
Yeah, it was our intention to capture what comes through this particular facility, you know, through this, this provision, and Mr. City Attorney can explain a little more further on how we developed that language.
So, we were, the original language in both the gross receipts from operation and in the payment sections were developed in consultation with Municipal Services, which is the city's sales tax consultant. These are not sales tax receipts, and so the mechanics are a little different, but the logic we were trying to capture here was anything for which there was compensation received by the company for the product having been in West Sacramento or through West Sacramento, that West Sacramento would capture a portion of it. The company's concern, as we understood it, was that there may be a scenario under which product transits briefly through West Sacramento on the way to a, another facility where the actual point of sale is, and we wanted to make sure, while we were, we understood the idea that they, they should not be required to pay twice for the sale of the same product once in West Sacramento and once in somewhere else. We wanted to make certain that we did not create a scenario where it was easy to game the system by having it, you know, ostensibly just pass through West Sacramento. Any, so we, we have set this language up in an effort to try to capture that, any kind of consideration that's received by the company for the time the product is in West Sacramento, whether that's money, whether that's credits, whether that's changes through the mechanism of transfer pricing, that West Sacramento will get its share of those costs of, of that revenue. And so, that was what we were trying to capture, and we, we think we've done it, we worked with Roberta, worked with Municipal Services, and I think we're all reasonably comfortable that this is pretty tight language, as tight as we can come up with at the moment. It's still an evolving industry, so there's always going to be a little element that we're going to see how it goes, but.
So, if they, this is a different company, but if they were to distill oil from cannabis, as an example, in bulk, and then ship that oil to one of their other facilities where it's bottled and packaged and then sold from that facility, how, how does that work in this?
I may want to have Roberta come up, but my, I'll give you my sort of lay understanding from the finance side. In the universe of how they will internally account for product, there will be some accounting for a value of the product that is transferred from their, in your scenario, from their West Sacramento facility to the other facility. Otherwise, they would have a big gap in their inventory for which they receive no compensation. And one of the mechanisms that was baked into these from the very beginning was a robust audit procedure, so that we would have the opportunity to go back, look at their books, and as I understand it from the conversation with Municipal Services, that's the sort of thing that would show up in an audit. We would, we would call out, how is it that you had, you know, inventory that looked like this, the inventory disappeared from West Sacramento, but there was no revenue or no, I won't use the right terms, but no revenue booked for it, and that that would be something that would show up in an audit, we would call it out and say, looking at this section on how we're calculating gross receipts from operations, there should have been some compensation accounted for, and therefore, West Sacramento should get a share of that.
Mr. Roberta.
That's exactly what we added, the transfer pricing language. We've been going back and forth with our consultants and attorneys who deal with the, these cannabis languages and agreements, over and over again, to try and make sure there were no loopholes or anything in our, in our development agreements that would allow product to ship through here that we weren't getting gross receipts for. So, one of the things that gross receipts is, it's not sort of your profit, it's gross receipts, anything that you receive for that product. So, if you've got a value of a product and it is flowing through the system, going to, in your example there, they did some oils that's flowing through, and then they're going to do something else with it and sell it, the value of, of the oils as they leave our facility, that would be a gross receipt, and even if they're, they're using transfer pricing to not show it as a revenue, it would be captured in their books by double entry accounting. So, the reason for adding the transfer pricing was just to make very, very clear that anything that passes through, that they get any consideration for, that we would collect our gross receipts on top of that. So, what the attorney stated was absolutely correct, there's, through the accounting, if it's not going through revenues, it's going through transfer pricing or another means, that we would still be able to capture that. The other reason for, for sort of making it really, really clear in this language is to make sure that we have, when we do have auditors come in and audit, that it's very clear what they're looking for as well, and that it was very clear to the operator what we're looking for, because if you come later and do an audit and it wasn't clear what they're going to be taxed on, and so they, they remitted less tax than they should have, we basically say, well, you owe us money, and at that point, it's coming out of their pocket. And so, we wanted to make it clear in the agreement upfront, what they'd be paying on, and then we'll also be doing some training for the, the new facilities as they come online, just to make sure upfront that everybody knows how, how this works and what they're going to be taxed on.
So, is the, I'm sorry, so this, well, two things, the audits are mandatory part of the DA, right?
It's not mandatory, we have the ability to audit through our development agreement, and that cost would be split between the operator and the city, or fully borne by the operator, but we are going to do audits on all of the, at least at first, as we, as we get them up and running, to make sure that everybody is operating appropriately and remitting things appropriately, that we know what we're looking for, and that our education to the new facilities as they open is adequate, so that they can start operating appropriately right off the bat.
All right, and is our timing on, like, on this one first round, or we think in the first year?
Yes, I'm actually working on an RFP right now for these revenue audit and consulting services, to have somebody to come in and audit our facilities within the first year, yes.
Okay. Mr. Johannesburg.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've taken a look at Gap and Gas, but when you do the transfer pricing, that's basically a cost allocation, isn't it?
I think it can be booked several different ways, and that was one of the reasons for, for putting in the transfer pricing, was to make sure that the auditors will find those no matter how they book it in their system, so.
All right, so there's, at least should be a minimum amount that, you know, for example, if a lot of product is shipped to a sister facility, there's got to be, under generally accepted accounting principles, accounting standards, there has to be some costs allocated that went into that, so you'd have a baseline of what the value is.
Correct, yes.
All right.
And they have, they have agreed to all this, that River Wellness?
That is our understanding.
Yeah, I, I, thanks, and I'm glad you're planning to proceed with audits of everybody right away, I mean, our experience just through other parts of the process is that we can't, we can't depend on their, on their accounting competence, there's, there's no signal about problems in this particular entity, but a lot of these organizations have come together relatively quick, and we want to make sure that they, that they've, they've got their act together, and then we're learning how, how to, how to enforce our agreements, so. Okay, thanks. All right, so then, if there's no further questions this time, we'll open the public hearing on item 15. Anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, then, we'll close the public hearing, return it to the council for any further questions or comments. Or for motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries, item 16. Is public hearing to consider Resolution 18-37 adopting the 2018-19 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program? Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Amber Whitaker, I'm a community investment specialist for the Economic Development and Housing Department. I am here tonight to respectfully request that the City Council hold a public hearing for citizens to comment on the draft, 2018-2019 Draft Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. So, for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, the city will have approximately 735,000 available for CDBG activities. This includes approximately 446,000 in entitlement funding, 130,000 in anticipated program income, and 159,000 in prior year resources. The draft annual action plan before you tonight includes staff's recommendations for allocations. These allocations include providing an estimated 625,000 to support the development of up to 85 units of affordable permanent supportive housing targeted to homeless individuals. This project will include onsite services and include low barriers to entry. Also, this allocation will help the city leverage for the project almost 3 million in private foundation money, so with the CDBG allocation included, including last year's CDBG allocation, that will provide almost 4 million in match to pursue the additional funding required for a project this size. It is also important to note that the project supports Measure E efforts to reduce community impacts of homelessness and accomplishes the top priority goal for the city's five-year consolidated plan for the CDBG program. In addition to this project, the draft includes an allocation for fair housing services and administration and planning for the program. Last month, on May 30, staff presented the draft annual action plan to the Economic Development and Housing Commission. The commission voted to recommend that the council adopt the draft 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. So, this concludes my presentation, and if there are any questions, staff is available to answer them. Thank you.
Are there questions at this time? All right, then, we'll open the public hearing on item 16. We don't have any requests to speak, does anyone wish to address item 16? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item, return it back to the council. So, Ms. Whitaker, the, just one technical nip, but I keep raising it and hoping that the clerk and I will be able to successfully get the commissions to all do this. So, the, I think it's particularly, especially useful for council, if we, if the, if the commissions, like the planning commission, vote on their actions and make recommendations to us as the commissions. And so, I just noted here, the Parks Recreation and Generational Services Commission had no objections to the activities, that suggests to me that they, like, a presentation was made, they asked if there was any questions, there weren't any, and so that everybody left, and no action was actually taken. It's really important for the commissions to, to be executing their, their formal government, this is not really for you, Amber, but for, to be executing their formal governmental responsibilities as part of the process, and their minutes ought to reflect what their votes are, and, and they ought to be taking specific votes on these recommendations so that we have them as well. So, but, so that aside, on the actual, on the actual project, I'm supportive of it, I want to, I want to understand, because this is one of the first items where we're really making a commitment on this permanent supportive housing project, which is a priority for the council, for the community, this is definitely a critical need in the city, but it's one of the first ones where we're, we're, we're taking a committing action, and I want to understand how we're, how we're addressing the, the local question. I mean, you know, that we've, the, it's, this is, this along with other funds that we're hoping to be able to deploy for this effort, represent a significant part of all the dollars that we have available to, to, to deal with homelessness, and so, it's, it's very important that we're, that we are providing a way out of homelessness for folks who are West Sacramento's experiencing homelessness, and we don't have, we don't have, especially in this kind of a program, which is a permanent program, it's not like the beds that will open up every other month, so we're making a long-term commitment of a fair amount of money to try to deal with the, with the fundamental challenges of folks that are experiencing homelessness, and if they're not folks that are from our community, then we've spent a lot of money and not dealt with the underlying problem that we have. So, this, these are federal dollars, is that, is this, will this, will that force our hand later to, or prevent us in any way from, from setting eligibility criteria or priority other than just, we'll advertise first in West Sacramento or that sort of thing, but real criteria that will allow us to make sure and to represent to the community that we're, we're dealing with, with West Sacramento's experiencing homelessness first?
Right, so, with all the types of funding that this project will be receiving, it is difficult to, you know, target only and solely West Sacramento residents. However, we anticipate Yolo County being the onsite service provider for this project, so you would have to be, you would have to be receiving Yolo County benefits to be eligible, so someone receiving Sacramento County benefits would not be eligible to live in the unit. In addition to that, we feel that, you know, Woodland and Davis, they currently have permanent supportive housing currently, and we are hoping that the West Sacramento Homeless Coordinator will be able to work with the developer in producing a referral system for the project. So, taking all these into consideration, we feel that the project will target a majority of the West Sacramento population, but again, like you were saying, with the type of funding that we are using, it is difficult to just solely restrict anybody but West Sacramento residents.
I want to, I want to push hard on this, because, and including and up to, you know, trying to, you know, get some federal dispensation on this, I have, I have had the initial conversations with HUD about this, generally, not this specific project, around the challenges they get, that HUD creates with these kind of rules, in terms of cities, communities preparing to invest their own dollars to deal with homelessness issues and affordable housing issues when, when, when the federal government insists on this kind of a procedure. We, we don't have, I mean, the record on this is very mixed, and every single project that we've done in the affordable housing region, we've said this, are, you know, we're going to target, we're going to market, we're going to do these things, and sometimes we get that, and, I mean, sometimes that gets the job done, it often does not. You know, it takes one refugee resettlement program, for example, to completely swamp one of our affordable housing projects, and then we've produced no affordable housing for folks that are on the verge of, are experiencing homelessness in our, in our city. It's not that refugee resettlement's not important or equally important to us as a priority, but we don't have any, we have no ability to manage, to manage the stock that our taxpayers and citizens are, are investing in, and so, we, we have to deal with this, this one in particular, because it is permanent, so, so I'm supportive of this, but I'm, but I'm, I don't want to signal, you know, to the new city manager that I'm, I'm committed to voting for this all the way through, because I'm not, in, in a, if we cannot reasonably assure ourselves and the public that the vast majority of the 65 is going to be for folks who are West Sacramento's, not Davis or Woodland or Winters, West Sacramento's experiencing homelessness, then I have, there are other ways that we should be spending this money that don't come with those strings. But this is the best program, so, you know, it's, it's a tough But this is the best program, so, you know, it's, it's a tough call, but, but, but we've got to be able to solve that problem, and, and whether we can access other, other sources of funding, or as I say, press on the feds to, to give us a special, you know, a special chance to demonstrate that when you do this, a community is able to come up with other resources and broader public support for a project than it might otherwise have. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the presentation. On the, the fair housing services, one of the goals there is to basically provide services that if someone's at risk of losing their home, to be able to go through landlord assistance or consultation. There used to be a program, I think it was Rapid, Rapid Reemployment Rehousing, that was really, really successful. You basically catch folks before they become homeless through some type of legal representation or, you know, even, even helping pay for rent if they're temporarily unemployed, that type of thing. But in the 21,000, it's probably not going to go very far in that effort, but is there an ability to have match of those funds for those services?
Yeah, so I can start by, the 21,000 is funding a contract that the city has with Project Sentinel, and Project Sentinel is currently under contract, so they're a housing, a fair housing counseling agency to provide those services. So they have a representative who works for the city, so they are offering all of the, they're doing counseling for residents, they're doing counseling for landlords within the city, and so the contract outlines all the services that they will be providing, and 21,000 has been sufficient to provide for that contract. But if, if, were you asking if there was needed money to add to that?
Well, I guess, yeah, how long has that contract been in existence?
Right, so the contract has started in January, however, Project Sentinel, we were under contract with them prior when we used state CDBG funding, and they provided that same service, and that amount was based on what was spent for that as well.
And do we have any information from that service on, you know, how many folks they've been able to help?
Yes, so they're required to provide quarterly reporting, and we've worked closely with the city representative to make sure that they're reporting on how many people, how many phone calls, how many outreach events do they do. If a case is opened, we ask to follow up with that, we want to understand how that case went about, and so we're making sure to get as much data as possible so that we can justify the contract in the future.
Does that ever come to council, is that more an internal report?
It's more of an internal report, but we can, we can definitely, at the end of this year, because the contract right now was funded with 2017 CDBG funding, we can definitely bring that report back.
Yeah, it'd be good to see, you know, if they're actually helping folks, and to what extent they are. All right, thanks.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
Thank you, just a quick comment, and, and first, thanks for the report, and I don't, I agree with, with the mayor around the permanent supportive housing, but this is the first time I really sort of saw it as a hard dollar proposal, so I think there's, there's more to come on this as this comes together, and what I want to make sure, I agree with the principles, I, I really want to reiterate that, that there's positive to this, that we're actually making movement on what's a necessity in this community and is, is in dire need, is, is the permanent supportive housing, because this goes a long way towards our goals of reducing homelessness. So, so it's, I'm trying not to mix the message around how important it is, but I want to make, make sure we underscore, we keep pursuing the project overall, because it is, the fact that Woodland and Davis have them and we don't, while it presents the opportunity for us to kind of keep West Sacramento folks, have that, have a resource for them, it also points out what we don't have to support them today. So I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we pursue this, I'm glad it's in this plan, and I want to make sure that that is a policy decision we have to make, and the mayor's right, it might be a dicey one if it comes down to it, but we just need to make sure, push it as far as you can, but most importantly, let's try to get it done, because it is an important part of what we need to do as a community, but I just want to thank you for that.
Yeah, and the magnitude, this is kind of, when, when you did the preschool, universal preschool, it was, in some senses, it was this way, which is, you can almost name all the fourth, four-year-olds in the city. We're, we're small enough to be able to do that, and our, our last homeless, you know, the, the last census, the numbers obviously fluctuate a lot, and, and, but the last census at 80, 80, 80...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, right, so, so eighty-seven, was it unsheltered or both sheltered and unsheltered?
That's unsheltered.
Yeah, okay, so eighty-seven unsheltered homeless individuals in the city, and a proposal to construct eighty-five units of affordable permanent supportive housing, the, the possibility here to do, do something fundamental for, for the, for the challenge both for the community but for these eighty-seven West Sacramento's is enormous, and that's why for me, I just not, I'm not willing to just have a hope and a prayer, we have to design this in order to accomplish, and I'm, I'm under no illusion, all eighty, eighty-five of the eighty-seven will, will make their way to permanent supportive housing. Our team and Mark and, and all our partners are fantastic, but there's a lot of challenges that individuals face that this is, this, they're not going to get every single one in, so it's not as though, it's going to be limited in that sense, but we ought to be, every single individual that could possibly enter permanent supportive housing ought to, ought to, ought to do that, and, and not, and, and not have us run out of space, because someone with a voucher from Espado is, is, is occupying one of these spaces, and we owe it to those individuals and to the community as a whole to, to take the chance to, to fundamentally, you know, get as, close to a solution to this, to this, you know, this, this deep problem as we possibly can, so. More to come. So if, 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 if for whatever reason this project doesn't come together, does this, do the, do these funds stay in our unexpendable balance for the following year then?
That is correct, so we can reallocate funds.
Okay, great. Okay, all right, then, is there a motion on the resolution?
I'll move it.
Second. All right, so moved and seconded, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 17 is updated the sewer fund, water fund, and refuse fund analysis and rate implementation for fiscal year 2018-19 and adoption of resolution 1845 approving related budget adjustments. Mr. Sharma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening once again, members of the council. On June 14, 2017, during the adoption of the five-year utility rate adjustment, the city council provided direction to staff to return to council and present a financial analysis of each utility fund before an approved rate increase is implemented. In this, in this item today, we're presenting the financial analysis for fiscal year 1718, the projections for 2018-19, a recommendation on the implementation, implementation of the approved utility rates, new budget requests pursuant to resolution 1845. Next slide, please. So just briefly to go over the council actions to date, on July 20th, council approved the waste holler contract with waste management. The contract provided an annual increase maximum up to 4%, and later on, I'll go over the actual increase. On April 4, 2017, at council workshop, a notice of utility service charges were mailed to all property owners of the record in compliance with proposition 218. On June 14, 2017, as mentioned, the council approved the maximum five-year rate increases for water, sewer, and refuse service charges. On July 1, 2017, it's not on the slide, the first rate increase was implemented. And then on September 6, 2017, the city council authorized the issuance of the sewer revenue bond, 9 million, and the water revenue bond of 15.0 million. The next rate implementation, if this item is approved, is scheduled for July 1, 2018. Staff presented a financial analysis on each utility fund, inclusive with no rate increase and with rate increase. Next slide. So looking at the sewer fund, the attachment two, three, and four in your packet includes the analysis on sewer enterprise fund, a detailed report, basically to focus on staff's recommendation, is to implement no rate increase for fiscal year 2018-19. And due to the following, because of the operating surplus at 143,000, cash balance without reserves is .5 million, cash balance with reserve is 1.9 million, and the most important thing is that, is the debt service coverage is 2.34. So the sewer fund is, is, the financial health is, is, is very stable, so we don't see a lot of changes in sewer fund revenues in future. Next slide. In terms of water fund, staff is recommending the, an increase in the water fund as approved on June 14, 2017. The reason is, if there's no rate increase in 2018-19, there will be an operating deficit of .6 million, cash balance without reserve is .4 million, there's, and then cash balance with reserve is 1 million. The debt service coverage is still there, is 1.28, which is point three, 1.3 higher than the required coverage of 1.15. Implementing the rate increase as approved will result in operating surplus of .3 million, cash balance without reserve 1.1 million, cash balance with reserves 1.5 million, and most important, debt service coverage is 1.45 million. As to be noted, the city is in the process of transitioning flat rate customers to muted customers, and we did not see a major change in revenues, actually, we see some savings on the muted side, so. Next slide. In refuse fund, attachment eight of your packet includes the detail of the refuse fund, and in here, the staff is recommending a modified rate increase, it's, which is less than the authorized or approved in 2018-19. So just to cover the additional cost from waste holler expenses, the waste holler expenses increased by 5.73%, but the contract only allowed an increase of 4%. So basically, the 1.73% is carried forward to future years. And there's no increase in city costs for the refuse program administration, and that the projected surplus at the end of this 1819 is .1 million. So this concludes my presentation, and we are seeking council to consider the staff's report on revenues expenditures for fiscal year 1718 and 1819, authorize no rate increase for sewer service charges despite the increase approved in resolution 1743, authorize the implementation of approved rate increase for water service charges pursuant to resolution 1743, authorize the adjusted rate increase that is less than the approved in resolution 1743 for refuse charges, authorize the change in authorized position list to add 1 FTE in sewer operating fund, 1 FTE, 1.5 FTE in the water operating fund, and adopt eighteen, resolution 1845 approving amendments to the utility fund budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
All right, Natish, you ran through that one pretty quick. So I'm going to go back to the, could you go back to the refuse, refuse fund, because I just, if you wouldn't mind going back to the slides and walking through that again, I'm sorry, just...
I know.
It's a little, yeah, it's a little light on our screens here to read, so.
Refuge fund, right?
Yeah, the refuse fund. So this one's being left with an operating surplus of, because I'm looking at the ta, this is on table nine, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Opening surplus of 112,000 for 2018-19.
So the contract that we have with them and the maintenance, the other means costs, the revenues are staying, they are staying, we got a surplus, so, they're, they're on track to maintain along with the contract, right?
Yes.
So we're not, 1.1, the, the 112,000 dollars you put here is, I think I understand this, okay. Sorry, you just went really fast on that last one, and I didn't want to make sure...
It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff and three slides.
Yeah.
Which is normally appreciated, but it just went really quick. All right, I understand, thank you.
Just a process question, it's just, this did not go to the Environment Utilities Commission?
No, it didn't.
So it really should, I mean, the, the commission is, has been charged with responsibility for this whole rate program, including all the recommendations on the rates, and I know it's not the Finance Department, it's the Public Works Department, but the commission is, it's not the Public Works Commission, it's the, it's a topical commission regardless of what department has responsibility for the topical area, and given the amount of time that they spend on the rates recommendations that they made to us, I think having, they, they get better at, at service, and we get better advice from them to the extent that they are in, they are in the full decision stream, rather than just like every four years, guess what, here's a sewer master plan, we'll see you again in four years, they, nobody learns in that kind of a process, so.
Noted.
Are there any other questions on this? Analytics are all pretty clear, so. All right, so is there a motion then on this item?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by Mr. Johansson, and seconded by Mayor Protemba Desma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item 18 is consideration and award of contract of the Golden State Fire Apparatus for acquisition of fire apparatus and adoption of resolution 1843 approving the financing of a certain fire apparatus, declaring the city's intent to reimburse itself from the proceeds of debt for certain expenditures, and adopting related amendments to the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. Mr. Blumberg.
So I think the council's already very familiar with these processes where we enter into equipment leases to purchase equipment, so I'll just give you the highlights. So tonight's action will authorize the acquisition of two fire apparatus, we typically just call them fire engines, but that's a technical term, and we would award the contract with Golden State Fire Apparatus in the amount of 1,754,008. And then we would finance that through an amendment to our existing master lease with US Bank, and so the financing would total 1.8 million, and we usually have a little wiggle room in there in terms of contingency in case as the vehicles are being constructed over a 13-month period, the fire department wants to add some miscellaneous equipment to, to the vehicles. And then we would be asking you to adopt resolution 1843 that would do an amendment to the 1819 budget to add about 15,000 in addition to the 165,000 that was already appropriated for lease payments, so lease payments would go up a bit to 180,000 a year. So the term of the lease would be 12 years, the interest rate would be 3.52%, and just for comparison purposes, in 2014, the interest rate was about 2.67% for the same term, so interest rates have gone up a bit. If you have any technical questions, I know Chief Heilmann's here to, to answer questions about the, the fire apparatus, if you have any, or, you know, I'd be glad to answer your questions about the, the financing or the procurement.
All right, questions, discussion? Mayor Protemba Desma.
Thank you, and it has to do with our last point, I mean, rates are rising, yes, so I'm glad we're getting them now and maybe not two years down the line when they're up again, and that's kind of my question, that we should be, or comment, not that we have budget for, but those opportunities that we have for those types of purchases or lease equipment for them or, or police or, or any public works equipment, we should be thinking about those things. If we plan for them two years from now, or a year from now, we might want to take another look, because it's, it's just, you, you hit on kind of what I was zeroing in on too, is I remember you came by a couple of years ago and rates were, we were kind of beaming about the rates, so just something to keep an eye on.
Mr. Johansson.
Mr. Blumberg, just on the 12-year lease, what is the useful life of these vehicles?
Well, the useful life can vary. I think I'll, do you want to take a shot at it?
That's a 12-year lease, lease purchase.
Yeah, it's 12, it's 12 years, but Chief Heilmann will be able to answer.
So standard best practices, 100,000 miles or 10 years for a first-out apparatus, and then 15 years in reserve, so an extra five years in reserve, and right now, we have actually two pieces of apparatus that have surpassed that by quite a bit, so that's what, we're going to replace those two pieces of apparatus, put two pieces in reserve, and then sell the other two pieces of apparatus.
Now, does technology change quite a bit on these?
Yes, it does. Yeah, technology does change quite a bit, and that's why you see prices do increase, but the standard functions of the apparatus are pretty much the same, you know, year to year.
Okay, all right, well, thanks.
You still can't order up a fire, new fire apparatus on the fly from, from your smartphone, though, right?
No, you can, and it's still...
People are still buying these things, correct?
We're very proud of our apparatus, and it's a 13-month build process, yeah, so.
Terrific.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so you know, further question or discussion, is there a motion on the item?
I'll move the recommended.
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 19 is consideration of workshop and approve and authorize submission of the draft Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan. See, and see.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have a workshop this evening for you on the draft Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan, and respectfully, we're also requesting an action to approve... we're also requesting an action to approve some middle of the draft document to satisfy the grant requirement. The Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan is, and was started in 2015 following the council's approval of the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan. Through the course of creating this document, we've had three public open houses, one was done in conjunction with the Broadway Bridge, and we were able to have over 300 attendees join those public meetings. We've had an opportunity to work with eight different consultants over a variety of disciplines, and as I'm sure you had a chance to see, have produced over 2,000 pages of technical materials. The Reuse Master Plan is an advisory document, it's similar to the Grand Gateway Master Plan and the Washington Realized Document. Although it does advise on direction, the approval, the eventual approval of the document will not permit any project to proceed, it does not have SEQA attached to it. It doesn't have SEQA attached to it because the grant that we received from the Strategic Growth Council required that we do not do SEQA. It says in it that you must confirm that the form of the document does not trigger SEQA, and that it is the land use that you are projecting be consistent with the general plan. So as I said earlier, it is strictly an advisory document. Many of the, many of the pieces of content for this document have been to our various advisory commissions, they've come in for the city council for check-ins and approval as we move forward with much of the content, and we've even been to the WASAFCA board, and some of this has even been to the Port Commission. As I said earlier, since it's an advisory document and there's no SEQA attached to it, no actions can be taken, but we expect that based on the material that we've done and the projected phasing, that it might be appropriate to do a specific plan sometime around 2025, that we think there'll be enough material that's been created and the flood protection program has proceeded sufficiently enough, that we would have all of the information that we need to be able to do a specific plan. And as I stated earlier, this document would, needs approval to be submitted to the state by July 13th, which is the grant deadline. The document is looking at three particular challenges that we're dealing with, and effectively the document is a due diligence reference guide and a management tool designed to address these three challenges. In the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan, there was much discussion about the transition economics, and at the time, the transition economics were calculated, we were at a break-even point, we were actually technically at negative residual land value. It recommended that we add the Stone Lock District in to improve the land use economics, as included in Volume 2, is an update of that transition economics. We are unfortunately still very much at a break-even point, even with the inclusion of the Stone Lock District, and we're still only looking at a small positive residual land value. The deindustrialization challenges that we looked at and expanded upon what was included in the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan, really attempted to attack, to attach these precursory projects to the land development strategy. So in recognition that deindustrialization projects will often be opportunistic, like the Shell transaction came up out of nowhere, and we were able to have the port take advantage of that, some of these deindustrialization projects are effectively barriers to the land development processes occurring, and this document attempted to capture that. It also attempted to capture that many of these deindustrialization projects and transition projects are beyond the scope of this document, and that really are not governed by the master plan, that includes flood protection. The land development challenges in light of our fragile transition economics were really designed to maximize the buildable amount of land, so we were really looking at trying to be proactive about setting a balanced flood protection solution, looking at putting in a street grid that connected with the urban land use, and we're really cognizant of trying to put in urban parks that were not using up a lot of developable land, but were still providing the citizenry with their expectations for that, for those facilities. The build-out projections that were included in the master plan estimate 5,600 housing units and 10,500 jobs by the year 2055, and we're looking at somewhere around $2.7 billion of annual assessed value, that's in today's dollars. We also included a market assessment with our work, and unfortunately, the market assessment came back and it was not positive. It said that there is not a lot of market demand for the urban product types that are contemplated in this plan, and it estimated that there was an absorption value, that the absorption for the supply that we would bring, be bringing on would take over 100 years. So part of this document is designed to find a way to transition the area and bring the district into a new market position, although it's not just the burden of the district, certainly there are regional considerations. Next slide. This shows the five deindustrialization priority projects that the document focused on, and this captures at a very high level all of the phasing work that's included in Volume 3, the land development strategy. As you can see here, it lists what all the development objectives are that this document is attempting to address, and the phasing strategy that is included in the document really is focused on articulating all of the activities that will need to occur, flood protection, rail relocation, the Broadway Bridge, et cetera, that will allow for finished parcels or parcels that are ready to go vertical, to have them come online. And effectively, we've also recommended in this phasing strategy front-loading certain key deindustrialization projects like rail relocation, and then as you can see in the table, also front-loading key open space improvements that help with that market positioning that we're trying to overcome based on the market assessment. One of the key factors that we focused on was flood protection. In the executive summary, it details how flood protection effectively predetermines where the park improvements were going to go, they also predetermined a lot related to the mobility network. One of the things that we focused on early on in the project was at the bulkhead structure. The area in orange is proposed to be filled in with dirt in the general reevaluation port that was approved in 2015. It's a document by the federal government, and the federal government is proposing to hydrologically disconnect the Sacramento River from the deepwater ship channel. This certainly has implications for water quality and recreation reuse of the Barge Canal, and so first and foremost, in 2016, we went to the Parks Commission following our first open house and solicited direction and provided recommendations to that commission that we explore adaptive reuse of the Stone Lock facility and look at alternative flood protection solutions. We completed a bulkhead alternatives analysis report in March of this year and presented that material to the WASAFCA board. We were able to successfully identify two alternatives to the GRR, a solution that committed cost savings of $33 to $39 million to the flood program, and provide better water quality opportunities, fish passage opportunities, ecosystem enhancement opportunities for the Barge Canal, as well as one of them includes re-electrification of the sector gate and retrofit of the sector gate, which also would allow the sector gate to operate in a way that it used to operate under its historic uses. There were two recommendations that came out of that alternatives analysis report, both of those are reflected roughly in this revised Central Park concept. The 2003 Parks Master Plan had a conceptual site plan for all of Stone Lock being built out as the Central Park, again, it was very conceptual and it did have lots of caveats attached to it. We took the intent of that document and came up with a new Central Park concept, we presented at a very high level what that would look like to the council in 2017. We worked with the folks that are updating the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, I worked closely with Tracy Michael on this, and this is the revised Central Park concept. This only, instead of taking up the 90-plus acres of developable land that the original Parks Master Plan incorporated, this only incorporates nine acres of developable land, and we still feel like we are satisfying the, the citizenry's request for what's happening at this site. The Parks and Open Space Master Plan update included a survey, and that survey talked a lot about having access to the waterfront and trails, and the reuse of the Stone Lock facility, and so we've incorporated all of that into this, this Central Park concept. The, in addition to including the flood protection component at the bulkhead at the confluence of the Sacramento River and the Barge Canal, this also assumes that the deepwater ship closure structure has been put into effect. All of the improvements that you see along the Barge Canal, that marina cutout, those piers, the scalloped edges along the south side that allow people to access the water and get into the water, all of those would have an extremely high permitting burden with the Army Corps of Engineers, and so we, we feel that in order to, to put in these improvements, that we would likely have to put the closure structure in. As you can see at the north part, this is outside of my project boundary, but it assumes that rail relocation has occurred, and then that site has been reused for an arboretum facility as well as a open space area and a non-motorized watercraft marina. This is the revised, this is the revised mobility network based on the discussion that we had with the city council in January. We received a direction to incorporate the grid that we had in Alternative 4 with the grid that we had in Alternative 3 for the north side of the city, and so we've merged these together. This is an, obviously, an urban street grid, it aligns with the general plan and the Sacramento Riverfront Master Plan's policies as it relates to connectivity. We've also incorporated a new north-south collector, which is Rail Street. One of the items that we were not able to discuss in January, and we asked for a small contract amendment with AECOM, was to look at the northernmost portion of this collector, which is Rail Street, and as you can see in this diagram, we're proposing a new intersection at Tower Bridge Gateway. So this would connect the western portion of the Bridge District in a way that it's not connected now, it would connect it to the city's civic center, and it would also connect it to Pioneer Bluff. And that recommendation to pursue that alternative and amend the Bridge District's plan is included in the document. This diagram shows the proposed streetcar alignment. One, the planning area has been identified by SECOG as a transportation priority area, and it's been included in the I-5 mitigation plan, so in accordance with those objectives, we brought streetcar all the way down to the first roundabout on Village Parkway, and you see that there's two possible extensions. You can bring it down to the southern alignment of all of Stone Lock, builds out at a relatively deep density that would ensure ridership of that extra leg, and then we've also contemplated in accordance to the South, the Sacramento Riverfront Master Plan and the Sacramento River Crossing Study, a potential for a non-vehicular bridge that would connect Stone Lock District to the south of Miller Park. This bridge was contemplated back in 2003, and it recommends, that document recommends the River, Sacramento Riverfront Master Plan recommends looking at that further, we're recommending that we look at that further in this document as well, and this also offers a potential evacuation route for Southport. We phased the improvements in this document into five-year increments, so this is the first five years worth of recommended improvements, and I thought I would take an opportunity to walk you through those. As I said earlier, because there's no SEQA attached to those, these are just recommendations, these aren't, we're not getting your approval and then going to go out and build these tomorrow. But what we have here are two types of capital improvement projects, we have several mobility network improvements that you see there. Red means that they're permanent facilities, green means that they're interim or phased facilities. So you're looking at, you're looking at constructing the Barge Canal Trail, which this council has already taken action on and approved the SEQA findings for, improvements to South River Road in front of the corp yard up to where the potential connection of 19th Street occurs, lighting and some temporary sidewalk improvements for South River Road, and then we're also looking at some improvements to Jefferson Boulevard for bicycle enhancement as well as parking. Right now, people illegally park in the bicycle lanes along Jefferson, and we have recommended an alternative that would fix that problem, and so we're recommending that we include that in the next five years. Outside of the master plan's area is also the inclusion of building the very first phase of the Rail Street North, which again would require consultation with the Bridge District's plan, Bridge District's plan property owners and this council. Not included in this diagram are improvements to the Stone Lock facility, where we would look at securing and doing structural retrofit to the buildings that are proposed to be reused, doing demolition and cleanup, putting improved rails in, lighting, and effectively implementing an access and safety plan. Also, we would be looking at improving the bulkhead feature. In terms of the administrative and pre-construction activities that we're looking at, we would need to come back to this council and have a workshop on perhaps like the Jefferson alternative, bring forward discussion about the Rail Street as I mentioned earlier. We are also just received a $300,000 grant from the US EPA to do more brownfield analysis, and we are working on that project scope right now, and we will be taking it to the Environmental and Utilities Commission once that's done, so we can present to them how we're planning on creating a brownfields remediation toolbox. And then the last item here is the Riverfront Investment Strategy, which is an item that's on the council's strategic agenda. The last section of the master plan includes a discussion of a pilot program for putting together Riverfront Investment Strategy. There's $735 million of this preliminary estimate to transition the districts, two thirds of that is regional projects. Regional projects that this document does not control, does not govern, but certainly a large portion of them determine the fate of this district. And so in recognition that this master plan is more connected than probably any other waterfront districts in the rest of the city, we're recommending that we implement this pilot program, and we will come back to the city council with that scope outlined in greater detail than what's included in the plan, and we will discuss how the feasibility of the plan can't tolerate any sort of suboptimal outcome associated with these key projects. And we're hopeful that the outcome of this project, this, this Riverfront Investment Strategy, will help us determine which projects might need to be under the control of this master plan, might need to be governed by a master plan or a specific plan, and with the intent that once that's determined, we would be able to go out and do a programmatic EIR for the document. So we would be in a position where we could say, these projects are foreseeably controlled by, and these are the foreseeable timeframes in which these might be implemented, and here's the, here's the project description related to them beyond what's included in the master plan document. And I estimate that the timeframe for completing the pilot project is about six to nine months, and then following that would probably be about two to three years to complete the programmatic EIR. Included in your packet was a letter from support from the Bridge District property owners, we've been meeting with them frequently, and they wanted, they couldn't be here, but they wanted to express their support in the work that's being done. And so that concludes my presentation, and I respectfully request that the city council approve this draft document for submission to satisfy the grant requirements. Thank you.
Okay, what exactly does that mean?
What does that mean exactly?
Because this is the first time we've had this in total before us, right?
That is correct.
And it's a lot.
It is.
To digest and to put the city's name on as our actual master plan, and I know we have the SGC deadline, which is, what, today?
It's the 13th of July.
The 13th of July, so we don't really have any time to do this at another meeting, but so what is, what are we actually asking, being asked to do in terms of saying this is, this is the city's plan?
No, you're saying, Katie, it's okay for you to submit it, that's the only thing that I'm, that I need, the only action that I require at this time is approval to submit the document as the, the final product for the grant. That does not necessarily, and in no way is it intended to mean that you are bound by the recommendations that are in this document, or that you're bound by any of the wording that's in this document, you are free to change it. I'm happy to come back and have five workshops with the city council, I just need this particular action to satisfy this deadline.
But I guess there's the action that we are adopting the plan?
No, you are, you are approving it for submittal for the grant.
Okay.
You're saying that I can submit it for the grant.
Does it remain a draft document?
That was my intent. The, the grant is, is, it does not, it does not particularly express whether or not it has to be, the draft has to be removed, it says, prepare a draft administrative for grant, get approval for submission. That's, that's the material that I'm working on.
Okay.
So my intent was to present this staff report and the attachment and provide that, and if there are any comments that the council wishes to have, like amendments or adjustments to the document, to adjust that in accordance to the, the recommended action, and then submit that as the approval, as the approved document.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Katie. The, so on the streetcar issue, I think you'd mentioned some of the economic challenges that this district is, is going to have, and these are long-term issues, market issues, and I think you threw out the number of 100 years, I think, before the realization would happen here, so I guess, I, the streetcar, I think, is anticipated in this area. I think the plan here, at least the draft plan that's going to be submitted for this grant, includes a streetcar line potentially going all the way down to the roundabout south of the Barge Canal. So having a streetcar in here also, it doesn't seem to affect the economic viability of this district.
Well, the, the economic viability is very fragile, so those costs have been incorporated in, but the document itself actually recommends that before we get to the later phases of the document, that we reevaluate the, the utility and the necessity of some of the later phased improvements.
I would think there would be a main incentive for development of high density along that route, to have a streetcar there, particularly if it's at the latter end of some of the movement of the, the tank farms and the corp yard and the tracks. Seems like the whole economics would change because of that. Just an observation.
Yeah.
But the other issue on the closure of the Barge Canal, I know we're not making a decision now to, to whether we're doing that or not, but in terms of hydrological disconnect, there would still be, I mean, even if that's closed off completely, there would still be some way for water to move between the river and the Barge Canal, I would imagine, for drainage, otherwise you'd have basically a, an area of water that is not refreshed.
Unfortunately, I hate to inform the council member, but in fact, that's exactly what the GRR says, it does not allow water to move from the Sacramento River into the D- It does not allow water to move from the Sacramento River into the Deep Water Ship Channel.
Right.
It's a 550-foot pile wall, so it is, it is effectively a new levee. So there is, the only way water would be refreshed in the Deep Water Ship Channel is coming up from the delta. There is no way that Sacramento River water would be making its way in if we, if we implemented the GRR solution.
Yeah, it just doesn't make a lot of sense because there's no flow.
Yeah, I don't know why that was the solution that was identified. I think that's part of the reason why the flood program was so supportive of us doing this additional investigation.
All right, all right. So in terms of the SEQA, I understand that this is being submitted. It does not trigger SEQA analysis because it's really not a plan. It's an advisory document. At some point, I would, I would think that we would want to take a look at maybe looking at a master SEQA district for that area to help spur development. I know it's a little bit early now, way early to be talking about that, but you know, that would be something that would also, I think, affect the marketability economics of the area, in order to have a basically master plan with SEQA already approved, or specific projects, allow projects to move a lot quicker.
I think that the timeframe for that is 2025, when we do the specific plan, and we'll do a programmatic EIR prior to that.
Right, right. All right, well, thank you.
And President Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Katie, for the presentation. I, I understand what you're asking for. And in kind of looking through the plan, the draft plan, there's just some, as Mr. Johansson pointed out, I think where Mr. Cobaldon is going, is there's just a lot of assumptions that are made in here that are kind of fresh to us, and observations on their end that just don't kind of add up, at least for me. I'll start with kind of the good, and that is kind of where you were going, I think, with the pilot plan and the Riverfront Investment Plan, which is to mirror what we, the work we did on the community investment plan, and how we would be able to fund a lot of the, one of the strategies we would need to, to basically fund the work that has to be done, right? That's, that's what this is. So is the toolbox looking at whether it's how we use the IFD or whatever other sources? Is that, is that the intent of the plan?
Only in the later phase of the, of the investment strategy, really the primary first objective is just to determine which regional projects, which deindustrialization and transportation regional projects, rail relocation, bridge, the Broadway Bridge, et cetera, there's, there's over a dozen of them, need to be managed under the land use umbrella versus being managed as a separate, isolated project. How can we ensure that those projects are proceeding on a timeframe that aligns with all of these assumptions, as you pointed out? The ability to get to where we need to get to seems to be possible, absolutely, but it likely will require a very sort of strategic and disciplined in knocking down the dominoes as they need to be knocked down. And I think the document does its best guess at how those dominoes need to fall, but it doesn't control those dominoes in any way, shape, or form. And so I think the first objective of the Riverfront Master Plan is to sort of tighten up those relationships and articulate those relationships with maybe additional traffic models, or additional coordination with the flood protection program, so that instead of sort of having like a range of 10 years for when remapping might occur, can we narrow it down to three or four so that we can make sure that as we're prioritizing projects, that we're maximizing the real estate value? Because that really is the challenge that we have, is maximizing the real estate value in order for the district to be able to pay for itself in terms of the magnitude of the improvements that are required.
And while I, and while I understand what you're saying, our history, especially with the Bridge District, came similarly, right? Or at least a conglomeration of a lot of challenges. We had rail, some of the rail lines spurs.
Yeah.
Accumulating of multiple landowners, the infrastructure that was needed. And when I first started in this, there was a lot of, and even back on finding commission, there's a lot of concentration about the Bridge District because there was so much to do, and we were trying to organize and prioritize. But it really was some fortuitous luck that we had, whether it was Prop 1C funds that came through, that we kind of stumbled upon a way to accelerate where we were on the Bridge District. So, so I'm trying to, what I'm trying to reconcile in my head around this is, again, adoption of this plan and getting on sort of a work plan that sort of prioritizes these things. I don't want to miss opportunities that might come should something like that occur again because we're not prepared for it, because it will take one, two, sort of really things that we can't foresee. Nobody saw Prop 1C coming back post-recession.
Yeah.
As a way to start infrastructure. And while we're contemplating and planning on the Broadway Bridge, you know, we don't know what other investments might come out of that, you know, where the tank farms might go as a result of kind of this new traffic. So there's a lot of other areas that I'm just, I'm a little concerned about pegging ourselves into a plan that says, we're going to only work on these things because this study, which, you know, again, our first look at today is, is saying that this is where we're going to maximize the real estate. But there might be some other really transformational event that occurs, or opportunity that occurs, and will we be ready for it?
I don't, I don't think the intent with the, with the investment strategy is to peg you into a 40-year commitment. I don't think we're asking you to get married to the document. I think what we're really asking is to understand what the relationships are, and if you, if opportunity does come available, if advancing a project has downstream consequences, we would like to at least be in a position to inform the council. So if a Prop 1C does come available, that we can say, okay, we're going out of order. Here's some of the things that might need to be looked at, or might need to be rejiggered in order to make sure that we're not forsaking an opportunity to, you know, we're pursuing an opportunity today, but forsaking something in the future that could maybe have unforeseen consequences. This is, I would say, 10 times more complicated than the Bridge District getting through this analysis. And so I, that is the concern that I have is that we need to have that.
I understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and, but we're, thanks to our outgoing city manager and the team, we're about 10 years ahead of where we thought we might be because we found ways to start this transition by putting in the McGowan Bridge and the Village Parkway.
Right.
Well ahead of any plans that had been in place around here. And that has done more to get us to this point than some of the work we had. So again, it's just, I don't want to lose sight of those opportunities, and I see where you're, where we're going because some of that work has to be prioritized. We have to understand the relationships. I understand that because of the configuration of Fifth Street now all the way down, the issues we would have with the tank farms, the deindustrialization of even our own property at the very end of Fifth, it remains a challenge, right? But I don't, I recall having a similar conversation with Val Topenberg years ago about the challenges of the Bridge District. And I don't want to say they were different, but similarly, a same sense of challenge. And again, things just happen, and we are, we remain very opportunistic to take advantage of those. And so, and then that's, it's kind of where I'm going back to, and looking through the document, you know, some of the assumptions it's making about just really, this is going to be a 100-year process? I don't buy that. And I just, I just, I'm, I'm not going to, I'll try to be on here with this council for another 100 years. Doubt it could happen, but that's not the point. We're trying to hasten that, and I just don't, I'm a little concerned because I'm, I'm supportive of kind of moving this forward. I know you're trying to get a grant, but that comes with a lot of caveats and hooks around about how we work this, because I think we've proven we can do it. We're seeing the Washington neighborhood totally emerge without any of us doing work, and we're hard to catch up with them by doing the Washington's incidental grants. So, so again, it's, it's, I think there's all sorts of really good work we can do. I just don't want to lose sight of that sort of opportunistic side and marry to this document. And I think you're trying to reassure me we won't be. And I'm not saying it's a bad document, but there's just some things in here that, just on the surface, to me, kind of concern, like how we, how it's viewed by even the other parties. I'm glad, too, that you've been working with the property owners about where we can go, but I just don't want to make any, any claims that we're slowing down, or we're going to, we're going to take the long view, and it's going to take 100 years to get to where we need to go. That's not, that's not the message I want to send. So I'll stop there. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, I completely agree. I want to be, I want, however we transmit, I want to be really, really clear with our, with our part. First, just that this isn't, I kept trying to figure out, well, which consultant wrote all this? Who did all this? And it's all internal. So it's an enormous amount of work that's been put into this by Katie and her colleagues in the various departments. So it's, it's an extraordinary product from all that. So congratulations to the whole team for doing it. I think that, you know, it requires the same level of extraordinary work by the policy apparatus of the city as well. Us, the community workshops that you've already had, the commissions, and we have to spend the time thinking about these issues. And there's a lot of them in here, and so I just, I don't want in any way to, as we submit this, to be signaling really concurrence with anything in it at this point, because the pieces all do fit together. That, that's certainly the 100-year piece. Given what we're saying about rent control and a bunch of other issues in the region, and the need to build lots and lots of housing around the region, that's just not a statement I would ever sign my name to, that we have enough urban housing in the pipeline for 100 years. I just, I couldn't, and wouldn't want to do that. And as I read the existing conditions, I, the first time I read the document, I didn't even bother reading past that section, because I'm like, what's the point? You know, I was like, this finding, this finding, this finding, this finding. There's really no point in even doing anything in this district. And I know that's not true, but I had to, you know, because we had the meeting, I'm like, no, I need to read the rest of it. And the actual strategies are all worth, you know, pursuing, but the existing conditions piece is very, very stark in its statement. It's not that the conditions aren't stark, but the assessment of how immutable they are, but also how every other, as Mr. Leto was saying, this makes it feel like the, like the rail yards 20 years ago. And even the Bridge District, to be perfectly honest, if it weren't for a single developer, we wouldn't be anywhere on that project. The existing landowners have not completed, have not done any of their job, other than one, on implementation of that plan. And so this idea of the city, even with landowner partners, kind of central planning everything, trying to fully plan everything in advance, have the full financing structure, full infrastructure, and then be ready to go, I think is a very 20th century way of thinking about planning as though it's just another, it's the new set of Disneyland. It's the new park at Disneyland. It's being opened all at one time, all by one developer. And the Washington District is more typical. Midtown is more typical. And even in this district, can imagine many deindustrialization strategies that don't involve any major infrastructure. They're, they're things like Bike Dog moving into existing places and activating those places and changing the value proposition of some of the land in smaller ways, but more organic ways over time, that don't necessarily depend on us investing $500 million before any real progress happens. Because if that is the case, we can't. We can't do this district if we have to solve all of this problem in that way, whether it's 1C or, or, and we, in this document, it wasn't intended to, and it can't, and it didn't, really address, well, okay, what is the district for? Right? Why are we doing this? What are we hoping to achieve? And, and what an innovation district led by, you know, UC Davis and a bunch of other universities looks like, and what it produces, and the revenues, and the benefits to the community is something totally different than, than, you know, some other kind of office park or whatever. So it's just a lot of questions for the community to answer, you know, before we were to, to say, this is our master plan. So the, I'm, yeah, I'm a little hung up on the title because, and the fact that it would just, it would just be the City of West Sacramento Master Plan for Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock. That's, that, that, those words are much stronger than what the document could possibly be, just based on first impression, on first impression tonight. Because if we're really going to spend this much time on, to do it, if it's going to be 100 years, I would definitely not build this road network, because I don't think there's any expert that thinks we won't be fully automated vehicles or something flying or whatever in that time period. So there's no point in building a 20th century road network in that, in that case. But yeah, so the, many of the strategies are worth pursuing, but I don't think we're at a point even to be able to say, these are the first five to do, until we have a sense about how we're actually going to approach this. And maybe it's not a single district, right? We have declared this to be the Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock District because those are the properties that we have and that the areas that are transitioning, but maybe that's not the right envelope to think about in terms of the first. Maybe there's parts of this that we just cross off and say, we'll get to that in a generation from now. As we used to tell the city manager, we don't have to build every square inch of West Sacramento in our lifetimes. It's not, that is not a requirement of any, of any, of the Constitution or any law. And so if we're not ready, then we don't need to be working on trying to build, trying to make something buildable that is not buildable economically in the current, in the current frame, even in the urban sectors of the city. So, so I'm supportive, of course, of fulfilling our grant requirements and submitting it, but I think we need to, the way in which it's described needs to be really, really clear externally, the cover, that, you know, the cover, you know, the first page and everything need to really emphasize that this is not the, this is in no way the official policy of the city at this stage, until we have the ability to go through and, and vet those issues and draw on it in ways that we couldn't have done before this document, right? There was too many, like, well, who knows? It's all unknown. And now there's a lot here that at least raise the right questions, provides, provide some of the, like, the default answers that might help to guide us in that way. But we have to connect the dots, and that will, that will certainly take more than one council meeting with just the three of us to do, so.
All right. Any one else?
I still need an action on the recommended.
Oh, yeah. And Katie, a really good job on this. I know it's a monumental task, but, but with that, I'll move the recommended action to approve this and authorize the submission of the draft master plan.
All right. All right. You got all the, did you write this down, Mr. Tuttle?
Well, this document's going to get modified, reflect comments tonight, correct? I mean, we have it until the 13th. I mean, I go back to the, just the concept of the title itself. Are we wedded to calling this a master plan? Can we call it a conceptual?
That is the title that's included in the grant agreement.
Yeah, I think we need to have a nice cover letter that clarifies this is early concepts for Pioneer Bluff.
It's a mock draft. That's what it was, it'll be draft, right?
That's how I'm, I'm intending on submitting the staff report and any comments that are provided, so.
Yep.
We have, what you have is what I'm intending on submitting, unless there are specific comments that need to, you know, additions or deletions that need to be made in the actual document before I submit it. The packet you received is the packet I intend on submitting to the grant.
Well, why don't we work on a covered letter that could be included in the plan, just to clarify, this is not a, your typical master plan for Pioneer Bluff.
Right, including the executive summary. I mean, it should be, so if I, as a citizen, if I picked this up in the library and just leaf through it, if I look at it right now, this, this is indistinguishable in terms of title and summary from, from the Southport Framework Plan or any other, you know, significant plan for the city. So I would have no way of knowing, this is actually not the adopted policy of the city. And I just think it's really important that that, that be, that be, while we satisfy the SGC requirements, their requirement that we not take action on anything that's subject to SEQA requires that we're not actually adopting a master plan as city policy to be adopted.
That is.
So I, you know, if we were to send something to them, submit it to them and say, you know, Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock Use Master Plan, colon, initial concepts, or framework, or whatever, and their response is, but our thing said master plan, and our, and our response is, but our attorney has advised us that, that adopting a, adopting a master plan and submitting it to the city, under the city's name, might constitute this. I just, I think we need it for the, for transparency of this process, and for folks who are going to be reading this in the public and potential property owner, partner, or another, it needs to be clearer that what this is and what it will be, what it will be the basis of in the future, but what it is not yet.
Okay, we do submit the staff report if that helps alleviate any concerns. It's, the packet is the staff report and the document.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about SGC misinterpreting and somebody, you know, who reads it at the library or online, or a property owner who's in the district and looks, oh my God, they've already decided that the road's coming through my property, and that the streetcar's going, I'm going to pay for streetcar, and my estimates are going to be $10,000 per unit or whatever, and we, of course, we haven't decided that. So it's, it's critical that whatever the document that has the pretty pictures on it is also the one that be, be clear inside of it what it really is.
Okay.
We don't need to write it here, I just, I think that's important.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. All right, did we, we voted on this, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on to item 20, which is consideration of an update and workshop on the pilot on-demand rideshare service. All right, Ms. Rand.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Presenting this item to you tonight, which includes an update, a regular update on the via-on-demand rideshare service, a review of the proposed marketing plan for the project, and a workshop on the performance evaluation for the project. There's a lot in the staff report that was presented to council, but the primary focus of this report really is around the workshop on performance monitoring and evaluation. So I'll be just briefly going over the project updates and marketing plan. So I'll be just briefly going over the project updates and marketing plan, but would be happy to elaborate on any aspect of those items, or answer any questions about them at the end of the presentation. As previously presented, this is a one-year pilot. Towards the end of this pilot, the UC Berkeley Transportation Sustainability Research Center will be conducting a final performance evaluation, and after that is completed, we will be presenting information to the city council to consider whether to extend the Via service. So the reason for this workshop this evening is really to, early on in the process, come to the city council for feedback related to the type of data and metrics that will be developed through this process. We're in the very early stages of this, so nothing is set in stone, and it's really intended to give the council an opportunity to make sure that the goals and outcomes that you deem most vital to determining this pilot a success or not have data and metrics that are being collected along the way. So in terms of project updates, as you know, we launched the service on May 14th with a major press event and entered into the initial launch phase, otherwise known as kind of a soft launch phase, wherein we were operating on limited hours and doing limited marketing and outreach activities. Until June 18th, we entered into the full launch phase, which was accompanied by an extension of hours to 10:00 PM, the addition of pooling incentives, which modified plus-one rider costs to only $1, and the introduction of a subscription-based service called ViaPass, offering $10 weekly passes that allows a rider to take up to four rides a day. There's also been a number of ongoing and upcoming promotions. The first two rides free for new users is still going on, and we also introduced on June 18th, $1 rides for everyone through June 30th. City staff recently released a rideshare photo contest on social media, and on June 30th, there's going to be a local business promotion event at Devil May Care, wherein new users or existing users can take Via to Devil May Care and get a free scoop of ice cream. Over the past six weeks of service, we have, as may be expected, some various challenges, and we've gotten some preliminary feedback from the early adopters. We did have a couple of technology bugs. Some people were getting a demand error, some people were having a little trouble getting through to the support line. These were isolated to a small number of people and have since been addressed. We were, originally had presented to council that we were exploring a partnership with the California Fuel Cell Partnership to do parking of the vehicles at that location, but that did not work out due to the cost of that space. And so the Via vans are currently being parked just north of the pit, north of the corp yard on a secured site. Another early challenge that we've noticed was that a lot of the drivers are not local, so this has led to just a little bit more confusion perhaps in navigating the local roadways, and so we've worked with the city manager's office communications staff to do an additional push to try to recruit local drivers through targeted Facebook ads and other methods. And then another barrier that we knew would probably come up, and we're just continuing to identify other ways of addressing it, is low cellphone ownership among seniors. They're a major early adopter, but in order to book a return trip, even if you're booking over the phone, you need to have at least a basic cellphone. So we're working with SECOG to help just get information out at the events we're already holding with seniors around how to get a free cellphone. In terms of feedback, we've seen massive, strong, positive feedback coming from the community, especially on social media, around this service. As I mentioned, seniors, disabled riders, and teens are actually some of our earliest adopters that we've anecdotally observed. A lot of seniors have been reaching out to express kind of a newfound sense of independence from this service, and being able to go to other local amenities that they used to not be able to, or would have to rely on others to get them to, so that's been really great feedback. And then we've also been getting some preliminary feedback around the types of potential expansions that folks are saying they'd like to see. One was later hours, another cheaper group pricing, both of which have since been addressed with the full launch. Others, we have consistently been getting feedback that people would like to see an expansion beyond city limits to places like the Amtrak Station, to the hospitals in downtown Sacramento, and a small number of people have been requesting Sunday service. If those are items that the city council would like staff to further explore and look into, we could return at a later time with information on what the impacts related to that would be and what the process would be, but I'm not prepared to speak to those at this time. So this slide is showing kind of a preview of the ridership report or data dashboard. It's included as an attachment to your agenda report. This differs slightly from what's in your report, because I wanted to provide the most up-to-date metrics to you. And I'll talk a little bit more about the detailed data that goes into these later. But what's shown here on top are just heat maps. The polygons that you see there are supposed to be kind of cutting up by neighborhoods. There are some kind of weird idiosyncrasies and nuances there that we're going to be working with Via to modify, to just a little bit more accurately reflect some of the neighborhoods in the city. And then on the bottom, you see there's top pickup intersections and top drop-off intersections. The key highlights here are that commercial centers have been the primary pickup and drop-off locations, particularly Walmart and the IKEA Center, we've had a lot of activity there, as well as the civic centers. In terms of preliminary ridership, as you know, this is really not going to be reflective of the full year, it's just the initial run-up during the first six weeks, and the first four to five weeks in which we were not doing aggressive marketing. But as you can see, on June 18th, wherein we launched the later hours and $1 rides promotion, we saw ridership almost double and continuously break records throughout the week ongoing, with the highest ridership occurring on Friday, June 1st, with over 100 rides given on that day. And as of today, we will have most certainly given over 1,500 rides on the service. So shifting over into the marketing plan, there's a lot in the marketing plan that was included in your staff report, and I'm not going to go into detail on every aspect of it, but generally, what we're looking at for the continuing rollout of marketing efforts is additional promotions or referral program, ViaPass, as I previously mentioned, as well as ongoing digital marketing. So we have a webpage established, we have a lot of different activities going on with social media, and we'll be continuing to work with the communications team to develop some fun videos around, you know, how to ride Via, things like that. We're doing a lot of direct marketing. The Via team is out on the streets doing tabling, going to, they've hit over 100 local businesses now, passing out flyers, and are working directly with staff to do learn-to-ride events. We've had six and have another one happening tomorrow across the street at the community center, working primarily with seniors to get them signed up and verified for senior or ADA discounts. And then we're doing a lot of other targeted outreach, some that we have not begun to implement yet around seniors, as well as teens, who we've noticed there are teenagers who are using this service to get to the high school, to get to the rec center, which is great, but we want to make sure that we're going through the right channels to reach them, reaching their parents, making sure they're aware of the service. We've also met numerous times with the Chamber of Commerce to support our outreach with some of the major employers, CalSTRS, DGS, and as evidenced by our promotion with Devil May Care, have started to reach out to the local business community to explore some promotions of, co-promotions of the program and their businesses. So transitioning now into the workshop, again, the real purpose of this is to give you a very early opportunity to provide input and weigh in on the types of data and metrics that you'd like us to be collecting. I'm going to give you some information on, a general overview of what our plan already is, and then also want to dig into the goals of the pilot and get your input on how best to prioritize those as we move forward into thinking about what will actually define success for this program. So there's two main resources that are going to be providing this information to the city council at the end of this one-year pilot term. The first is the ridership report or the data dashboard, which you have some components of that included as attachments in your report today. And the other piece will be the final performance evaluation report conducted by the UC Berkeley Transportation Sustainability Research Center. So there's a lot on this slide, but it's an overview of the data that is available, not just in the data dashboard, the kind of beautified reports that are in your attachment, but also on the backend, what we're receiving at the staff level. So we're getting data on individual rides, including origin, destination, time, and date, the number of passengers, ride distance duration, a lot of data around the actual operation side, the quality of the service, and, you know, overall customer satisfaction, those types of things. Some of the things that are not currently included, but that we're going to be working on adding into the dashboard, or just being able to provide to council at regular intervals, is time of use. So not just seeing the rides per day, but being able to see when are the popular times of use throughout the day, how many rides are actually being shared. Currently, we have the number of passengers that are being booked, but not the number of shared rides yet, so that'll be coming. The total number of accounts that have just been created or signed up for. Revenue recovery, that'll be reported separately, but there's an isolated account wherein all of the fare box recovery is being held and trust by the city, and it will be up to the council to determine whether to reinvest that or use it to recover costs on the service at the end of the one-year term. The usage of promo codes, Via is providing unique promo codes, depending on the event or activity that they're conducting, so that we can track the effectiveness of some of the marketing activities we're doing. At the six-month point, we are planning on pushing out just kind of a miniature survey to get some early demographic information, so we understand a little bit more about the use cases that are emerging, so that we don't have to wait the full year for the UC Berkeley evaluation. And then starting in September, we'll be coming back with the first quarterly performance report, which will include all of this information with a little additional summary by Via on whether this is in alignment with, you know, what they've seen in their other markets, what trajectory they're expecting moving forward, that type of thing. So the second major component of this is going to be the final performance evaluation report. So as a reminder, this is an independent evaluation that's being conducted by UC Berkeley. They will be using a lot of the operational data to consider performance, but this is much more intended to look at the broad impacts of the service, so social, environmental, institutional impacts of this type of service. They're planning on collecting the data to inform those conclusions, primarily through surveys of both users and non-users. The survey is primarily going to be going out online, but we've also talked to them about doing a hard copy to make sure that we are reaching seniors, as well as coming up with a method of capturing data on teen usage, whether that is going through parents and surveying them on their usage, or possibly trying to go directly to the teens. And in terms of the institutional analysis that they'll be doing, that's looking a lot more at interviews with staff, with key stakeholders, to understand what are the best practices, the lessons learned, you know, what was the institutional culture that it took for us to be able to accomplish this, what type of policy changes might be implicated at the end of the one-year service, those types of things. And the key metrics that Berkeley knows that they want to try to capture through the survey are things like mode shift, so what type of mode of transportation would people have taken instead of Via if it didn't exist? When we're surveying both users and non-users, understanding why people aren't using it, if they haven't downloaded it or tried it, if there's a change in miles driven, so trying to look at the shift in VMT if there is one. And then general changes in travel behaviors, if people are making more linked multimodal trips and shifting to taking Via to bike share instead of driving, if this is enabling people to drive less or actually go car-free, if it makes them think, hey, maybe I'll sell my car, I can actually live without it now. And then, of course, getting the data on demographics and socioeconomic status, so that we can really start to tease out the use groups and how these behaviors might vary across those groups. So all of this is really only relevant in the context of the goals of the pilot, and ensuring that the metrics and the data we're collecting are measuring progress towards the goals that the city council identifies as kind of key indicators of success. Most of this has already been presented at prior council meetings, but in review, it's really aiming to reduce single occupancy VMT, increase linked multimodal trips, incentivize pooling, enable car-free lifestyles, and reduce auto dependency, alleviate parking demand, improve access and mobility for underserved communities, have a sustainable ongoing cost, strengthen the overall transit network, and help close first and last mile gaps to transit. At this time, I am going to be looking if there are any additional goals that are not reflected here, that the city council direct us to add them to the list and make sure that we develop metrics to, in order to measure progress towards them. And the other thing I really want to hone in on is the fact, just kind of zooming out a little bit on the subject, that this is not going to be a very straightforward analysis. In terms of assessing the performance of a pilot like this, there are not a ton of kind of apples-to-apple comparisons out there. There are a lot of somewhat similar projects that we can compare ridership, we can compare costs, but in terms of the exact model, there are some nuances that might make it difficult. There's also going to be some confounding factors. The fact that we also launched bike share simultaneously will make it a little bit more difficult to tease out whether Via alone had the, you know, effect on the community versus other modes. There's going to be some inherent survey design challenges in terms of asking perception questions and asking people about how they changed their behavior as a result. But I think most significant for this conversation is that there may in fact be conflicts in the outcomes of the service regarding the goals of the pilot. So for example, one goal is to reduce VMT, but there may in fact be latent demand in our underserved communities that could result in a net increase in VMT as a community, which may not necessarily be a bad thing if it's, you know, improving quality of life or health outcomes for disadvantaged groups in our community, but it'll become increasingly more complicated to tease those things out as we get down the line. And of course, what is already being talked about in this space, that services like this could actually be shifting people off of already sustainable modes, such as biking and walking. So at this time, I'm looking for some key feedback from the city council, primarily which goals and outcomes are most vital to determining the success of the pilot at the end of the term, and are there any additional goals, outcomes, or data and metrics that staff should seek to incorporate into the ridership reports or the final performance evaluation report? And again, this is not the last time we'll be back to talk about this. This is just a very early opportunity to get your feedback and to help shape the process as we move forward. Once we do start to develop a survey with UC Berkeley and develop those metrics, we'll be coming back to get additional feedback. And then again, as a reminder, lastly, if the city council did want us to explore expanding service into downtown Sacramento or add Sunday service, we would ask that you direct us to do that this evening. And then just lastly, a really quick review of upcoming events. We do have a Learn to Ride event tomorrow, the June 30th Devil May Care promotion, and then we'll be returning regularly as directed by city council to TMI Commission and city council. And with that, I'm actually going to return to the previous slide, and I'm happy to take any questions or feedback that you have at this time.
Okay, sir. Questions before we take public comment? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, sir. You're doing a really good job on this. A lot of comments in the community about your engagement. I think it's really, really, really well put together and doing a great job. So my questions are really, I'm just going to really focus on how this is affecting or helping the goals that we have that are mentioned in the Age Friendly Action Plan and folks that may have not had transportation options before this. So looking through this, in terms of the regular ridership reports, I know you're not identifying folks by age, so I wanted to see if technically that's possible, either by someone submitting a birth date when they do the application, and then correlating that with the age of the rider, and then not only the age of the rider, but where the rider's going, so we can get some data really on where the different age groups are going in town. And if that's not possible, maybe some assessment. And if that's not possible, maybe some assessment by the driver that could say the person is young, middle, or old age, or something like that, some kind of overview of the demographic, because we don't really have that here. And without that, we can't really look at how the goals of this mesh with the goals of the action, Age Friendly Action Plan and the Mobility Action Plan. So that would be kind of a key thing that I would like to see, because, yes, we could to meet goals of ridership and reducing the number of cars on the road, and that would, I think, come through, you know, the number of rides that actually have ride sharing going on, because it could be two vehicles instead of, or one vehicle instead of two. On the, in terms of success, you know, I think some of those goals, if we look at the Age Friendly Plan, and I know there's a couple of areas in there in the Age Friendly Plan, and one is ADA, it's a transition plan, and I know that's talking a lot about streets and sidewalks and things of that nature. But also, I know it'd be kind of touchy to get that information from the riders, but, you know, I don't know how we can gather the information that if someone, for example, has limitability, maybe it's one of the new vehicles that's coming out, to look at that and see, you know, get made, not only an ability issue, that we can make an assessment and goes into the data in terms of where that person is going, or also maybe the disability and age combined. I think those would be two good data points to do that. Another point in the Age Friendly Plan is the materials, the printed materials, and to make sure that, you know, I do have a number of the copies of the brochures that you've put out, to make sure, you know, these address the issues that seniors have. For example, if you don't have a phone, or you don't know how to use a phone, how you do that, if you don't have a credit card, I don't think we've talked about that, because you obviously need to book this with some type of credit facility, and someone who may either not have a credit card because they can't, or because they just don't want them, you know, to have some way for that person to be able to book a trip, maybe through some type of charged, you know, charge card at the community center or whatever. The, and in terms of the local business involvement, you know, I'm reaching out to some of the business. I know the Chamber is looking at doing this as well. But if the rides look like they're going to, like, major retail centers like, you know, Walmart River Point or Nugget or Nugget Center, to maybe engage those businesses that we're having people go to to maybe provide some discount coupons on site. So if someone, for example, pays a dollar to go to Walmart, they get a dollar discount coupon going there. So basically, it's a free ride to Walmart. You know, that, of course, takes reaching out to the businesses, and I understand each of the businesses at River Point are separate businesses, there's not really a representative group there. It's, I think it's probably the same in the Nugget Center. But something like that, so we can look at being a little more creative to get people to go, because at least what you've shown here, people are going shopping, essentially is a big thing, because we really don't have health, we don't have health facilities here, so you can't go to the hospital here, which I totally understand wanting to go midtown and, you know, up to Center or whatever, that would be huge to a lot of people. And I'm certain that's going to be talked about in the future. Let's see what else. So I think that's really kind of the general comments, too. When we're looking at goal setting, what I'm looking at is, yeah, we're meeting goals in terms of this rideshare program, but how does that meet goals with other plans that we have? For example, age-friendly, and there's, I'm sure there's other goals as well. You know, the goals of healthy eating, active living, you know, how this is, you know, even though folks are, they may not have gotten out of their homes now, are actually able to get rides and are having to walk a little bit to do that, so it does help that a little bit, or they're going to more interaction, social interaction with folks on the other end. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, is some way, maybe go through the Age Friendly Action Plan, look at the goals there, and see what metrics that we can glean from that. But I think one of the main things I saw, the omitted data was really the age demographic here. And I'm not sure that surveys are going to get the information. There may be some technologically easier, either by the rider inputting something when the folks are going to make an assessment at that point, or some type of birth date in the application process, and explain why they want the birth date.
And I can respond a little bit to two of those.
Are there questions?
No, responses to his questions.
Okay.
Just in terms of getting that data, we are going to be hearing back soon on an AARP grant that was looking at subsidizing and analyzing the effectiveness of incentives with seniors, so we would probably be able to collect a little bit more of that data through that effort. And then, there is a verification process to get the senior and disabled rider discount, so we do have a chance to request some limited data from folks at that time. And so, we'll start to do a more detailed collection of age during that process.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, that's really going to show, you know, what folks are actually doing, and good information to have.
Great. Can we add one request for public comment on this item? So Laura Jameson?
Good evening. Actually, I want to echo Mr. Johansson's comments. I had the same concerns that a survey wouldn't maybe not capture the full use of who's using it and what the benefit is. And so, I had the same thought. I finally actually downloaded the app today and signed up, and it did not ask me for my birth year, do I currently and actively use a car? I think if there's some well-worded questions in the app that people can put in voluntarily, I think it would give some good data to know, are people just using this because it's cool, but they're still going to drive anyway? Or are they really actually getting a benefit because they don't have a car or they have limited mobility? Another thing I was looking for in the report, and I think it's going to be a big question moving forward, is the sustainability and the cost. I don't know if that's something that could be looked at sooner than at the year-end report. One of the questions I had is how is this going to be paid for? Once this one-year test program ends, I got the impression earlier tonight that it's going to be from the SBA money? I'm not too sure on that, but if I can get some clarification on that. But from what was said earlier, is that the cost per year is about $485,000 per year, which is about $40,000 per month. And when I did the math on the number of rides, it was well under $40,000 per month. So just, I have, you know, just questions about the sustainability of the cost for this program moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor President Ledesma?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Sarah, thanks for the presentation and the update on where we are just a month into this? Is that right? Just over a month? And just some initial feedback that I've received and have used it to a degree, I think there's enthusiasm for. I think there's still a bit of wonderment of how do I use this? And you kind of brought it to light that we've had VIA and jump bikes kind of roll out at the same time. And it's just, I think there's been a little bit of, we went from one transit operator, which is Yellow Transit and YOLO Bus, to multimodal in one week. And I think people are just, okay, I got choices. And I've seen people who are now experimenting with what they can and can't do. I know one of our commission members on social media posted he tried it out for a commute one day, took VIA, which I've heard quite a bit. They took VIA to the bridge or Rayleigh Field, caught a jump bike and got in the midtown, got there within 25 minutes for $5 and no parking hassles, which was like, his big social experiment was like, I can do this without a car. I've seen others that have tried it for the first time, asking me, can this now be open every day of the week till midnight, you know? And so, there's, I think everyone's figuring this out, and it's going to be some time for us, for the socialization of it to be kind of there, whereas that is, we're all getting used to this and figuring out how we're going to use it. I, myself, I'm trying to figure out how to use, I tried to use it Saturday almost exclusively for errands around town, and it worked great. And it didn't have to worry about parking and anything else, and it worked great. My car stayed at home. A couple of, so in short, I think a lot of people are really excited about it, they're trying to figure out when to try it and how. I even met a couple that live in the far reaches of Southport, down off South River Road, and who are asking me about it, like, can I use it? I feel bad using it, and yeah, it's yours, too. So I think they're going to try it, and they promised me they would. So I think it's just a big, it's going to be some time for everybody to settle in, but already starting to see some trends emerging, which was really cool to see people go into IKEA, people coming to down here in the Civic Center, City Hall, and see, just kind of, it matched up to what I heard from one of the drivers, in fact, that one of the big stops is the Tower Bridge area. People are asking, just drop me off at the Tower Bridge, I'll take a bike or walk across to get to wherever they're going, because we're that close. So again, I think that my initial reaction is just, a lot of enthusiasm, lots of questions, not bad, just trying for how do I use this, which is why it's in pilot. I do want to, a little bit what Mrs. Jameson brought up, which is context, because I'm on the board for the Transit District, too. And we just last month approved the 1819 budget. And so, why do we even, where does this, where does this come from? What context do we, people haven't watched our whole Mobility Action Plan come together and where it started. It came from us not having any transit options and no opportunity to even try something, right? That was the intent of this a year and a half ago, two years ago, that we needed to find other ways, because frankly, we had transit that was the YOLO Bus, which is a great service, but it maybe has outgrown its, or at least it's, the times have changed for it and what's it's used today. And we just approved a budget last month that was a, about for fixed route service, about an 8.5% increase in what we commit to them by way of our local dollars, which is about $2 million a year we give to the YOLO Bus every year for their fixed route bus service, which are all large buses, as our outgoing city manager reminds me every time we bring it up, and they're impacting our roads. And most of the time, I think everyone would agree, and I wish it wasn't, they're empty as they're making the rounds. And in the age of Uber and Lyft, people just, as a transit option, aren't using it. They have cars, then things, and then get an Uber or Lyft to get their door, this time, that has changed. Ridership is down at YOLO Bus, it has been down for three years, and it continues. These are trends that have changed their dynamics at YOLO Bus in terms of what do we do now? And there's active conversations within that board about what do we do now? So in context of that, I'm looking at VIA as like, okay, we have these, and these two models, we're not talking about Jump today, so we'll talk about VIA in the scope of, can this better service complement what we do? That was the intent of this, is how can we construct a micro-transit operator that the city could pilot out and through its transit dollars that it gets allocated for service to see how it works? Could it better serve neighborhoods that typically don't use the fixed route service, the bus looping around every time? And so far, I'm looking at the trends, I'm seeing heavy usage down in the Bridgeway-Lakes area, down in the area where my neighborhood, over in Southport near, off London and in the Southport Town Center, I see it quite a bit, and down up in the northern part of town in Broderick and even, and Bright are getting really heavy usage around the commercial areas. So it's serving, it's certainly serving areas that, you know, I don't think I can consider Bridgeway-Lakes. In fact, I think we've cut service for Zennix a little bit down the Bridgeway-Lakes area over the years on fixed route service. So again, is it, can it better serve that? That's what I'm going to be interested in seeing, and has it been able to pick up that slack? Because that's, our goal isn't to eliminate YOLO Bus, it's to see, can we find the right fit so that on the district side, we can adapt and maybe start to the point of how is this sustainable? It's sustainable if we have enough transit dollars to sustain this kind of type of transit and complement it, and maybe reduce the cost to trend and streamline what we're doing on YOLO Bus so that we have, still have choices. The YOLO Bus, I'll carry its torch awhile, its ability to get across the bridge onto its downtown shuttle is an important service for us. I was going to ask about that in a minute, about how we complement that. But I think that in terms of how we measure its effectiveness, I think you're on the right path about asking the right questions about demographics, where they're going, and would they have used any other transit service before? Because that's the question that I always had for us at the district, is are we getting new riders? We're still servicing the same riders we have. So, but will a service, will a transit service be able to allow riders who had never thought about it, our commissioner, Mr. Westall, who tried it for the first time? Is he going to, is this a new choice for him? So again, those are kind of the questions I have. I do want to follow up on kind of YOLO Bus, because I think at some point, there was, have we been working with them? I know they had talked about doing a promotion to where you get to the Transit Center and you take the downtown shuttle, and it would be cost, is that in place?
It's not in place yet. We're meeting on Monday, actually, to follow up on that. There was some funding coming through an LC top grant fund that they were awarded, and it's just delayed a little bit, and so I'm reconvening with them on Monday to continue that conversation.
Yeah, because I think that's the Tower Bridge drop-off, you know, kind of people want to get across the bridge in a downtown. So those who maybe can't even, as fun as the jump bikes are, you know, maybe getting into that bus service, that will be an important addition to this, to see those in the surrounding areas in West SAC have now the opportunity to get for, you know, $3 or to the Transit Center and then get the additional fare for free is what they're, what we're contemplating. Because that is, that's a good kind of closing of the loop on sort of the complete transit model. The other question I had is around employers, because that was some of the feedback I had had, is nobody at CalSTRS had really heard what was going on. They have a lot of people like to take shopping trips, and they just don't want to get in the cars, go to the parking lot, and go find parking at IKEA, so, or wherever they're going. So I'm glad to hear that's happening at some point soon.
We don't have a date scheduled yet that I'm aware of, but we have been in coordination with them. They directed us to someone who has not responded yet, but we've gotten in touch with the Chambers to help boost that.
Okay.
And then, we've also had the VIA team doing flyer passouts on the River Park.
On the River Walk?
River Walk, trail area where a lot of people go walking during lunchtime from CalSTRS and DGA, so.
Okay. And then, so how, in terms of data, and it goes back to the multimodal, how will we be able to measure the increase in multimodal use? So we will get the ridership from VIA, but how will we connect it to, then they use the YOLO Bus, or then they use the jump bike?
So that'll be through survey questions of asking people, do you ever chain your trips using VIA and then taking bike share over to downtown? Or do you take VIA and connect to the bus, those types of questions?
Is there opportunities to do that? I think there's a point, surveys are kind, I found that the surveys we got from the district that were the ridership surveys, you may not get the right sample size, but if there's other opportunities, you know, to do it through, in conjunction with Jump, is there any opportunities to kind of get any feedback from them from data?
Yeah, they are providing staff with regular metrics on the ridership of their system. I don't think that they're collecting any data around our people transferring from Jump to VIA or anything like that.
Is there any way that, yeah?
But we can definitely look into it and return to council with a response on that.
Okay. I don't think I have any other goals. The ones I'm kind of looking for around, the ones I'm asking about is, how do we increase multimodal? How do we strengthen the overall transit network, which these questions are sort of leading to? How do we know, even if it does increase? I think you make a good point about the increase in vehicle miles traveled, right? That's the right measure. If it results in people getting out that normally wouldn't have, you know, or they depend on paratransit if they're seniors, because that's one of the things they do, or they use, they don't go anywhere at all, those are kind of the opportunities that we had envisioned in terms of how to, how to increase getting people to a mobility option that gets them to where they want to go. And whether it's to the YOLO Bus stop or to whoever, that was our ultimate goal, is can we, are we providing choices and options that allow them to move around the city? And so, if we can find the survey questions or the data points that show an increase in that, that would be, that's what I'll be looking for. In terms of expansion, I know down the line, we're going to be gathering feedback, so I'm hesitant to say we, I'm going to ask, I'm not asking for you to expand, but it is, I think it's totally reasonable to think about hospitals or... But it is, I think it's totally reasonable to think about hospitals or or certain other kind of necessary places as a as a destination. I don't want it to crush the kind of the pilot and have provide a cost overrun that we then we can't sustain it. But the need for that is is something we should think about. More so though, we need to be thinking about, I think, a little bit of Sunday service. I wanted to use it Sunday and it's just not, you know, it's just not there as an option. Either they get to somewhere for breakfast in the morning, as some people indicated, which I need to think about. Going to church on Sunday would be a good use. So again, those are kind of Sunday, the things that people would do, going down to again, taking it to the River Walk or to to a Jump Bike Station or IKEA, whatever the case. Those needs are still there on Sunday, probably more so as people get ready for their week. So it's something we may want to think about.
And then just to be clear, we're not asking for council direction to implement expansions, just to direct staff to explore like what would those impacts be? Would it result in a cost overrun or are there additional steps we would have to take to coordinate to make it happen?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, first, congratulations to you and the staff team and to via. I mean, it's been an extraordinary launch and rollout, very professional, established, very strong brand identity. I mean, brand identity is something that people wanted to try and wanted to use and to and to see what it was like. And that's that's really key. And we've seen that in the response by folks both using it and asking about it and in social media and elsewhere. The excitement level about via and what it's accomplishing already is is very high. And and the both you and the via team have been have been really great at responding to individual queries and whatever, but also evolving the service and also being smart about the rollout and the little soft launch essentially like a soft opening. And people were saying, oh, but there's, you know, there's a van parked here at the Nugget or whatever, it's been here for hours. Well, yes, we're making sure everything is in place before we try to get two thousand people a day riding on it and not and not getting them picked up. And so the staging of their rollout has been very smart and very effective in moving forward. And I think we have to keep at that. This is the temptation, because it's been successful, because you've been good at it, is to want to make it perfect and to make it everything. All right, and especially because we're government, we wanted to serve, we wanted to solve climate change, social, you know, social inequity, the problems of all sorts of mobility and disability, you know, every single thing in the world, we want to solve with a service because we're under something good here. And that's admirable and yay, because that yay for our instincts. But we need to deliver a successful, sustainable service that that gets at the core goals that we've outlined. And we need to give it the chance to work. And we need for the public to be able to understand, you know, even even with the with the promotions and the changes from this last week, they were great. But there are also people who are just figuring out the service already. And so we cannot be every week launching, here's another enhancement here is how this is changing or whatever. People need to feel like this is a service that they can they can lead, they can kind of live into for awhile. And even though I've been riding it, you know, pretty much every day, you know, for folks who have only tried it once or twice, they need to get some regularity in the system. And certainly, we're going to have a good evaluation about it. And we're not rebuilding paratransit. Right, I think this is really, really, really important because that's our that's our that's our wheelhouse as government is how do we make sure that we're serving every one of those needs? Paratransit continues to exist. And and it likely will continue while the I mean, it would be great. And a longer term objective would be to to have via be a more attractive alternative. And it is already for most paratransit riders than paratransit is itself. But it is it can't be designed as paratransit and then hoping other people will ride it. This is in some sense, one of the fundamental problems that beset public transit in the first place. Was it was so designed as something that you took because you had no no because you had a lack of mobility or a lack of capacity? That folks who had choices, that was not what that's not something they wanted to ride then. And we so we do need to be careful that via does not just be become marketed as this is for seniors. And by seniors, we mean people who who have mobility limitations, which is not most seniors. All right, so because if we do that, we will we will we will undermine the overall brand of service for the entire community and the needs that are the needs that are out there. One of the things that the AARP has emphasized in their in their work nationally and with us is to stop using the term senior as code for you don't have a phone, you don't know how to use technology and you cannot walk. That's not most seniors, but it is also it also turns off a lot of seniors from even hearing the message in the first place. Because we're speaking to people in terms of their lack of capacity and not what they are, what they what their aspirations are, what they want to do, what they need to do. So I just, you know, we should be careful when we say we're, you know, we're going to go do a workshop for seniors because they can't use technology that we are we're creating to some extent that 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 approach in the past AARP has found is is already and likely to become increasingly ineffective at actually reaching the people that we want to reach who need the help, right? They're just like all of you know, all of us do in different ways. But when it's branded as you need this because you are therefore too old to be able to use technology or whatever, it's it becomes problematic in terms of being heard by the user. So as we're developing this, we got it has to continue to be something people want to ride because it's a great service. And because it allows you to do things that you couldn't do otherwise do and connect inside the community. And I think a lot of us have already, you know, heard this ice cream example over and over again, but I love it. You know, this the woman who has taken the bus to the supermarket for years and years and years, who reports to us that for the first time in, you know, in a decade, she's able to buy ice cream at the supermarket because she can get home at before it all melts. Waiting for the bus, taking the bus, walking from the bus. And that is the kind of quality of life improvement that we're talking about. It's it's not she didn't get heart surgery because of via, but her daily life is is transformed in a different way. Not just the ice cream, but the other things that are available to her. That's what we're doing here and it's really profound. And so to stay focused on on how much better this is in so many dimensions than what existed before via? And not only think about how could via be absolutely perfect if we had unlimited amounts of money? But to really deliver on the service that we're promising, I think continues to be important. This time, the ice cream example reminded me though that the that one of the goal, the metrics that we don't really have effectively. I mean, it's here sort of in the improved access and mobility, but it's not just the vehicle miles traveled, it's the time, right? One of the, you know, the real social injustice of the public transit system in America is that we that it's built as though folks who are who have fewer resources, their time doesn't matter either, right? And 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 that is an important metric. The fact that that someone who can't afford a car or or cannot drive for for health or vision reasons or whatever can actually do things that don't take two hours when they're only, you know, a mile away is an important quality of life metric. It's at least as important as reducing single occupancy vehicle miles, in my opinion. So I think it is captured to I think it's intended to be captured and improve access and mobility. But it deserves to be a thing in and of itself is the time spent on travel in in the community. That along with supplementing and replacing the underperforming transit fixed routes, the providing affordable service at a sustainable cost in enabling the car free lifestyles and alleviating the parking demand. To me, those are the those are the highest priorities of the of the of the goals and the metrics. I do want to achieve more multimodal trips. But if people are able to get for me, it's this is this is this whole this service is about people and their mobility. It's not about how do we get more people to get on a bus? It's not about it's not about how do we increase bus ridership or anything else. I mean, those are secondary, but the primary thing is can a resident or visitor or worker in West Sacramento get to where they need to go? And can they see the full range of possibilities of things that they might even imagine that they wanted to go to before? It's all about them. And so multi linked multimodal trips is great if that is going to improve their mobility. If it means that now they've wanted to take a bike bike share to get somewhere, but they weren't sure it was going to rain when they came back. So now with via, they can, they can do both things. That's that's a value, but we're not necessarily trying to get more people onto line, you know, YOLO Bus line thirty five. That's not that's not necessarily the objective. So it's it's an important metric, but for me, it's not one of the most important goals in terms of that or the or VMT. Single occupancy VMT, yes, but but VMT period, no, for the reasons and the conflicts that you that you already mentioned, that that ice cream trip just wasn't taken before. And it's better, it's better for her to get that ice cream than it is to to avoid the vehicle miles traveled. And the same thing for folks in Bridgeway Lakes who may have a car and they're in Bridgeway Lakes and undoubtedly have a car. But there are trips that may not have been happening before. Maybe it is the seventeen year old in the in the house, it's like, I'm going to, I want to go to to the to the Nelly concert, Rayleigh Field. And I'm going to take via, right? That maybe couldn't have gone before because mom and dad were both working or whatever. Sort of unrevealed demand for mobility that what that couldn't be couldn't be met before that now can is a positive is a positive impact in the in the city. So given that the overall goals and metrics are the right ones, I am looking forward to seeing what the sharing metrics look like. As you said, we don't have them yet in the in the dashboards. Of all the rides I've taken on via, not a single one has involved another passenger. And so that we've there's the capacity in the system for that to be accomplished. We do need to be careful that we're not setting an expectation that that, you know, in a couple of months, when when our all of the promotion and marketing is in full swing and and via is operating in full capacity, that people aren't like, I thought the system was just going to be, you know, single me, a whole van coming to take me to where I would need to go. We need to be priming people for the for the likelihood that they're going to be sharing the vehicle because it's the point of the service as it as it goes forward. Also, wasn't sure about the on how the on time is calculated. I've had a lot of issues with the via GPS and it's both its time estimates and and its ability to recognize West Sacramento addresses. I was surprised to see West SAC City Hall as a as a destination because when you enter in, West Sacramento City Hall doesn't come up. I mean, if you don't know the address or if you enter in West Sacramento Civic Center, it doesn't come up. If you type City Hall, you get Sacramento City Hall only. So I was surprised to see that, but but the in the GPS system, it consistently under projects time for pickups. And, you know, for those of us that, you know, the residents who live here know the road network. I know if the if via is at the if it's at the Southport Town Center, it cannot possibly get to my house in two minutes. It's just not, it's not possible, but it repeatedly says stuff like that. So the on time metrics, it would be curious what not necessarily right now, but in the future, like is that is that on time with respect to what it promised it was going to be? Or some other metric of of timelines would be useful to to know. Then via pass, is the via is the new via pass, is it eligible for employer tax employer reimbursement in the same way that a YOLO Bus pass would be? Or?
Yeah.
When it came out, I thought this is a great opportunity for employers to be able to provide the equivalent benefit to somebody who wants to, in lieu of a bus pass or parking, to be able to take advantage of this. But do you know is the?
So I can say the answer is yes, but I would have to ask Gobina to speak to the actual details of how that works. But because of the number of passengers and the type of vehicle, it does qualify for community benefit programs, yeah.
Great. Okay, and then I guess lastly on expansion, I I am not ready. I mean, the the expansion across the river in for, you know, for residents, for riders, for me as a rider, it's a no brainer. It's like, yes, of course, I will take it anywhere. It's that's a that's a big step to begin service outside of the city limits. And it's not a sing, you know, we have, we have, we can't be running transit services on the other side of the river without approval from the other side of the river and probably multiple agencies. It will raise issue because the idea of it being entirely within the city meant that it was serving a last mile function. That if we start to if it starts to compete with YOLO Bus's core route, the forty two in particular, and with RT, we can expect some significant questions from the transit agencies and from the associated the amalgamated Transit Union. There's a lot of issues that would get that would rise if we were start to move at that point. And I just don't two weeks into the full launch, it's too early to to take a full step change to an entirely new geography in my in my my point of view. I'd like to see Sunday, but like it's ten o'clock, I took via to come to this meeting. So I'll have to get home some other way. I'd like to see, you know, so for people who come to council meetings, it'd be great if it goes past ten o'clock. It's not, we're not at the stage where the what about blank should be driving the the design of the service yet. Get keep keep getting this service right, keep getting the predictable service that people are expecting that they are getting. Get that great and get the the survey and the information in, I think, before two weeks is too fast to be at a stage where we're talking about significant changes to the scope of the service, I think. Now, if via comes back to you and says, look, for as a business matter, we see, we can see that there's enough demand to make this make sense from a ridership and revenue perspective. Then then by only I'm not suggesting we should put the brakes on you. But I but I but it should be, we should be making sure our focus, since it is successful and people are are using it and enjoying it, that we're developing, number one, a sustainable business model for it and not loading it, not Christmas treeing it with a bunch of ornaments up right now. So I completely agree with all the, you know, the suggestions that we proceed and to the extent possible, we should be looking at them. But I think also with the eye towards, you know, focusing on making sure that this is and this is an effective business proposition that we can sustain sustainably deliver now that now the residents are hopefully adapting some of their travel expectations around it, so. All right. This one's not actioned and you'll be back again in a couple of weeks or a couple of months.
The only action was just to approve the marketing plan.
Oh, okay.
I'll move the recommended action.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, that carries, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
All right, and then by previous order, we're going to.
Mayor Cobaldon, can I ask one thing? There seems to be a question as to.
About whether we took a vote on that one item? Yes, I have, okay, I have the same question, so let's.
I thought I moved it.
You did move it. It was definitely moved and seconded, but I think we got in the conversation with with Katie about the item before actually taking the vote. And this is on item nineteen, correct?
Correct.
All right, so the Madam Clerk, is there a pending motion?
Sorry about that. Yes, I did have that. Mayor Protemla Desma had moved the item and Councilmember Johannesen has seconded it.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you, thanks for pointing that out. All right, so then we're at item twenty one, which we're going to be part of the will be the subject of the continued the adjourn the meeting that will be adjourned to the date of July ninth. But before we do that, our for council calendar.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So coming up tomorrow at eleven thirty is our retirement lunch for our city manager. So hopefully, we have some attendees joining us to celebrate him moving on to new new activities and experiences and adventures, so. And then this this Friday is at noon is the Police Youth Academy graduation, that's in the Galleria. And then on Saturday at six o'clock is our first Summer Night Lights and that'll be at Bridgeway Lakes Park.
Questions on the calendar? City Manager report?
Okay, so this is a little muscle memory here. I'll miss these meetings and the policy discussions, but I want to finish strong and not be a lame duck city manager, even with that advance notice. And I appreciate the council backing me up on that and the staff backing me up as well. So with that, we've been monitoring the what's going on in Sacramento. John Robinson will make a report in July about the legislative efforts. But there was a matter dealing with taxes on groceries and the mayor signed a letter of support. That will come back to the council on the July eighteenth. As you know, in the state budget, there were a couple provisions that we're watching, principally the Indian Heritage Museum got its hundred million. So I checked with our city attorney, we still have not heard from parks, but we anticipate that will will happen fairly soon. So with that, thank you and thank you for for hiring me, even though Mr. Kristoff is not here. It might be past his bedtime, but if he's watching, I want to thank him for hiring me and Mr. Vegas as well, who might be watching this. He's a pretty young guy. But thank you, and I know our two members who are not here, I appreciate the chance to work with all of you and hope to have a taco with you tomorrow.
Mayor Protemla Desma?
Just just, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Marty, it's been a pleasure to work with you and get to know you professionally and as a friend. You have done so much for the city, the scope and breadth of the work that you've done and led and and from, I mentioned it earlier, getting a bridge done ten years before its time to caring for the little things too. Requests or questions that we would get as council members, you are always responsive, you are always proactive. You reached out to me, to my colleagues and made sure we were aware of issues or things that were going on, made sure we had what we need. And it marks a real pro. And that's what I think about when I think of Marty Tuttle, just a real professional who, I guess, as I said, just your capacity to to get things done, which is in this very much in the spirit of the city, is so appreciated. It's been a pleasure to work with you alongside you for the last six years. We we've had, I think, a great relationship, I will treasure it always. So this isn't goodbye, I'll see you on the links sometime in the next couple of weeks. I'm waiting for the text, you're going to go hit Lamb Park nine for a bit and but you deserve every moment you're going to have in your next adventure. I know you're probably tired and needed a little rest and but but thank you sincerely for all the work you've done on behalf of the city. I know the community appreciates it.
Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, Marty, I think going back when we.
Yeah, Marty, I think going back when we were looking at our city manager hire, when you were interviewing, you know, I think we all, the city, the council, we're concerned we're taking a chance of someone who wasn't a city manager before, but you still had a lot of organizational experience and departmental experience, and that really paid off. I mean, the, you know, the way that council every year basically sets policy in the top 10 priorities, management and council priorities, the way you handled the implementation of those was top-notch. You had that entrepreneurial spirit. You know, we've had a chance to look at a lot of other city managers and how cities are operated, and I think the major reason why the city has done what it has done over the last seven years or so, since you've been here, has been a result of your management. So stepping into something that you hadn't done before and excelling at it is really, really impressive. And we've seen over the years how you've supported staff in our meetings. It may not have been in an open session, a lot of times it was, but you're always advocating for staff, and I think we always heard that, and it really helped us do what we need to do to make the city strong. So in the end, I think, you know, you really did an outstanding job here. You know, I'm proud to have worked for you and over the years, and it's been, it's really been a real benefit for me as well to see how you operate and how you actually move things along. It's been an education for me as well, and I hope you all the best on your next career. And you're a young guy, so you've got a lot of years left in you to move on to your next phase, and just all the best to you.
Well, I know we're going to have a lot to say tomorrow, and Marty, you and I have already had this conversation, and we will many times. Even before you arrived as the city manager, you had already made a huge contribution to West Sacramento through the work that you'd done at Secog, before that on Capitol Court, on a variety of things, but a lot of the change in this city and our development position and our transportation infrastructure came during the leadership that you were, when you were the executive director at Secog. So you were no stranger, you were new to many of the, some of the issues that we don't, you don't deal with at Secog or as deputy director of Caltrans, like sewers and fire and some of the other services that we provide here at the city. But you were no stranger to the place or to getting amazing things accomplished, so. And there's really no, there's not, you know, square block of the city that you can't see your legacy, often in the big projects, you know, the big flashy ones, the bridges, the, you know, the art, you know, they're all of that, the lighting in smaller places, but, you know, when I will bike past you on the Riverwalk on my way home and you're there, you know, counting the tiles on the subtile sculpture and you're making sure that, you know, if there's one missing, that somebody's replacing it within the next hour. The level of attention, your simultaneous ability to advance transformative change in projects against all the odds, bureaucratic, you know, external agencies and the politics and the financial limits and everything else, and at the same time, never lose the reins on the day-to-day, the stuff that our citizens depend on. You know, everybody gets excited about all the big things, but you still want the toilet to flush, you still want the park open when you go out for a picnic. I mean, the basics have to be, number one, and you're fantastic at staying focused on all of that, and recognizing and promoting and rewarding and uplifting staff that are great at those things, too. You are a pain in the neck to work with, for, and at the board level, and I have really personally appreciated being, having a partner to fight with, because you're as passionate about the city and about how the city's culture and its team and its people, you know, can move forward as any one of us or any other resident of the city. And we need that, the city, the residents, the business community, the city government needs a city manager to be that kind of a passionate fighter, and you have been that in every way, and made everyone else better as a result. And as Aaron starts as the new city manager, on your departure, when we pointed him, we said, and it's extraordinarily true, that the fact that the new city manager, the very first one to come from within the ranks of City Hall, and that our pool of candidates, our best pool of candidates were entirely candidates from inside City Hall, that it's a testament to them, but it's certainly a testament to the leadership, to the culture, and to the very personal attention that you've paid to staff and their talents, their careers, their hopes, sometimes their tragedies in their own lives, that you've been right there with them. You've been a manager and a leader in so many ways, it's really made a difference for them and for the community, and deeply, deeply appreciate it. Thank you very much, and we'll see you tomorrow at the party. All right. City Attorney report?
I don't really have a report.
Well, Jim, I wanted to say about you.
He asked me to mention that you both, you all have probably heard of the Supreme Court overturning the, or upholding the travel ban, reversing the lower court. Just if you hadn't remembered, we had submitted an amicus brief on behalf of the lower court holding to strike down the travel ban, so just want to report that one. That is it.
All right, thank you. Questions for the city attorney? Staff directions for members of the council? None, we have no future agenda or requests? So the motion then before us would be to, Mr. City Attorney, if you would, make sure I get this right, so the motion would be to adjourn the meeting to July 9 at 6 o'clock?
Correct. Adjourn the meeting to 6 o'clock on July 9.
Jim?
Which is a reminder, I will not be there, so I had planned vacation that week, so.
All right, and it'll be for the sole purpose of considering...
The only item on the agenda will be what is item 21.
Item 21. All right.
Oh, second.
All right, so it's been moved by Mayor Protemla Desma, second by Councilmember Johannes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned to 6 o'clock PM on July 9. Thanks, Marty.